Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for coming out today. Let the record show Councilwoman Gonzalez is not here. Councilmember Alvarez is not here. Councilwoman Cobb is not here. We will start off with our invocation and we will have our pledge allegiance by Councilmember Solomon. Would you please rise?
This day, this is the day that you've made. And we thank you for this meeting. We pray for your wisdom, your guidance. We thank you for every soldier, all of our military forces and their families. We pray for them. We pray for their strength. Protect them all over the world. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
Councilmember Kendrick, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Solomon and Councilmember Kendrick. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda? Councilmember Solomon made the motion. Can I get a second? Councilmember Segaro seconded the motion. All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Will you raise your hand? You can click it. It may show up there. Motion carries. Counsel, because we only have four councilmembers, if one leave, we have to stop the meeting. So please be cognitif of that until another councilmember show up. Work session, counsel. You have three minutes to speak, three times each. Discuss the agenda items 1 through 16 for the June 17, 2025 regular session. There's no final actions until regular session. Madam Secretary.
Hillman 25014, consider minutes of regular city council meeting of May 20, 2025.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS 25093, consider a memorandum resolution adopting the Bell County Hazard Mitigation Action Plan as approved by the Federal Emergency Management Administration.
Thank you. Mrs. Wilson, I mean Williams, Sarah Williams. Good afternoon, ma'am.
Good afternoon. So I bring to you today the resolution to adopt the Hazard Mitigation Action Plan for all of Bell County, which includes also the city of Colleen. FEMA requires that we update this plan every five years to ensure that it still aligns with needs and capabilities within our communities. It outlines the mitigation vision, goals, and objectives, and assesses risks from a range of hazards, and outlines also the strategies that we take across the county within all of our communities to mitigate those hazards and those risks. So this included all of Bell County and the cities within it, as well as Colleen. So our staff took part in the planning process alongside county and the county and their staff and other cities, as well as citizens, to revise and update the contents of the plan. This ensures that the city remains eligible for federal grant funds for a wide range of projects. The plan has been approved by the Texas Division of Emergency Management and the Federal Emergency Management Agency. And so staff recommends that the city council approve a resolution to adopt the Bell County Hazard Mitigation Plan as approved by the Federal Emergency Management Agency and authorize the mayor to sign the associated resolution for adoption.
Thank you. There are no questions. Madam Secretary.
RS 25094, consider a memorandum resolution awarding bid number 2528 Stone Tree Golf Club Bunker Renovations to Fusion Golf Limited in the amount of $368,247.60.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, counsel. As you know, we took a golf course bunker renovation project out to bid last year, but we only received two bids, and they were both pretty high. And so the council decided to reject the bid last year. We rebid the project in March of 2025. This project includes survey and staking, clearing, grading, removal of old bunkered sand, and reconstruction of the new bunkers, as well as grassing. Five bids were received this time, and Fusion Golf provided the best value for the project at $368,247.60. This project, as you know, was funded through a CO bond, approved in April 1 of 2025. $3 million allocated from this CO bond is for golf course projects and will be repaid by golf course fees. These projects include bunker renovation, as well as an irrigation system replacement. If approved, this project will begin in October with a four- to six-month completion time. In order to limit disruption, the course will close nine holes at a time to complete the irrigation system replacement, as well as the bunker renovation project simultaneously. So staff recommends that the city council award bid number 25-28 for the Golf Club Bunker Renovation Project to Fusion Golf LTD in the amount of $368,247.60, and authorize the city manager designated to enter into an agreement with Fusion Golf, and authorize the city manager designated to execute any and all change orders. Any questions?
There are no questions. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
RS 25095, consider a memorandum resolution approving change order number five to the corporate hangar Phase Two contract with NASCO Incorporated.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Wilson.
Good afternoon, Mayor, counsel. This is change order number five to the corporate hangar number two project we have. Basically, this is the reconciliation or the closeout change order to end this project. A little bit of background, on February 28, '23, council awarded the contract to NASCO Incorporated in an amount of $5.3 million for the construction of a second corporate hangar at the Colleen Regional Airport. Project included the construction of a new hangar building with the first floor office space finished out, along with access road, utility services, parking lot, and other associated improvements. Previous change orders 1 through 4 added a total of $547,751.84 to the contract, bringing the original contract, or bringing the current contract amount up to $5.8 million. Change order number five is actually a reduction. It includes some scope revision, such as drainage improvements, installation of door canopy, additional safety battlements, and various credits for reductions in follow project quantities, as well as some allowances built into it. It's actually about a $120,000 reduction. So this change order results in a final contract amount of $5.7 million, $5,762,194.26. Staff recommends council authorize the city manager to execute change order number five for the corporate hangar Phase Two contract with NASCO, and authorize the city manager designated to execute all contract documents and all other change orders associated with this in the amounts set by state and local law. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
RS 25096, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing a letter of agreement with Zone Industries LLC to provide one submersible pump at lift station number six in the amount of $86,191.87.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, counsel. This item here, as we continue to try to improve our maintenance of our lift stations and pump stations throughout the distribution system, there are several pumps that need to be replaced. So I've been here several times with pumps at different locations. This is lift station six. The station operates about three submersible pumps. We've discovered over our inventory that two of those pumps have exceeded their eight-year life service, and at this point, they're beyond repair, something what happened to them. So we're looking to go out and replace one of those pumps. There is an expected rehab, full rehabilitation project coming for that, but it's going to be about 18 to 24 months before we get to that point. We don't want to have a catastrophic failure before we get there. So we're going to replace one of those pumps now. The station can operate off of two functional pumps, so we're going to prevent any catastrophic failures in the future. So that's what we're going to do. So we went out to bid for this, and the bid came back, and we actually ended up going with the buyboard process to accrue this pump. And I'm not going to bore you with the whole bid process. You guys have been there before. This is what the pump looked like. What we're asking right now is that city council authorize the city manager designated to execute a letter of agreement with Zone Industries LLC utilizing purchasing cooperative buyboard contract number 672-22 in an amount of $86,191.87. And furthermore, authorize the city manager or designated to execute any and all change orders within amounts set by state and local law. And I'm here to answer any question you may have about this item.
RS 25097, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned real property at 1506 Leader Drive and 1510 Linda Lane.
Thank you, Mr. Wallander.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Mayor, counsel. For you who don't know, my name is Andy Wallander, so I'm an assistant city attorney in the city attorney's office. So this is my first presentation before y'all. So what I've got tonight is one item for the sale of some real estate that the city owns. You'll notice that there are two properties on there. Unfortunately, just this morning, the buyer for the Linda Lane property withdrew his offer, so I'm not going to be able to get that rid of, not tonight. But so we're going to move forward with the Leader Lane. So in February in 2025, staff identified two parcels of vacant and unapproved property that it owns in fee simple. You'll see the descriptions there. 1506 Leader Drive is a 10,426 square foot lot. They were conveyed to the city in February of 2017. Both properties are located within a residential district called the Sugarloaf Estates and are surrounded by existing single-family homes. None of the city departments or staff have any sort of future use or plans for these properties. Here's kind of an overall map, just to show you kind of the general location of these two properties. You'll see it's just south of 14 and west of South Fort Hood Street. There's more of a zoomed-in location. You'll see the pen to the north is the Linda Lane property that was withdrawn, but the pen to the south is the property on Leader. So both properties are currently delinquent in property taxes from 2012 to 2017. This is before the city acquired ownership of them. 1506 Leader Drive is delinquent in $1,887.24. These amounts would become the responsibility of the new owner if you approved the sale of it and would not be affected by this sale. However, both properties also have liens filed against them. These are in connection with the abatement of high grass and weeds. Again, this is prior to the city acquiring ownership of them. The property at 1506 Leader Drive does have liens totaling of $6,531.25. Now, city policy allows for the waiver of these liens if it would constitute a public purpose. And staff believes that the waiver of the liens would constitute a public purpose, as it would make these properties more marketable. The sale is contingent on the waiver of these liens. Here is, this is Linda Lane, so this is the property that has, the offer has been withdrawn. But here is the property on Leader Drive. So that first one there is looking at it from Leader Drive to the back of the property. And then the picture there on the right is looking at the back of the property, looking towards Leader Drive. So in order to sell it, staff engaged a realtor company to publicly advertise the properties for 30 days on the multiple listing service. The properties were listed for cash-only offers on an as-is basis. The highest cash offer for the properties received were $15,000 for both properties. If approved, the properties would be conveyed to the highest bidder via special warranty deed with a release of liens. The alternatives tonight, the city council may not authorize the sale of the properties for $15,000, authorize the sale of the properties for $15,000, or authorize the sale of the properties for more than $15,000. Staff's recommendation is that the city council authorize the sale of 1506 Leader Drive for $15,000, and authorize the city manager or designated to execute all documentation necessary to complete the sale. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, I have one quick question.
Yes.
The bidding process, you said Linda Lane. How would that process? Will it start back over since they withdrew?
No. So we did, we had received three approximate bids for it. So the realtor that we engaged, like I said, this just happened this morning, so we didn't have the opportunity to really go talk to those other bidders. But we are going to be able to go and discuss to see if their offers are still valid, and hopefully be able to bring it much sooner than having to relist it for 30 days.
Okay. Thank you. There, Councilmember Solomon.
On the lien on the property because of the grass, you said we did not, you had to work, they're going to, this is within the $15,000?
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't.
You had lien on both of the properties?
Correct. Yes, they both have abatement liens.
Right. There's lien on both of the properties.
Yes.
So how does that work again? Could you explain that, please?
So we will deliver with the deed conveying the property. They'll get a release of liens. So this is kind of synonymous to a tax sale, where we would waive the liens in the selling of the property. It's believed, because we didn't pay anything for these properties, so the sale is going to be 100% to the city. So it's not only going to allow us to recoup those expenses, but more so. So just the act of selling would release the liens for the property.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
RS 25098, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing the procurement of Dell Power Store hardware from GTS Technology Solutions in the amount of $285,330.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Resta.
Good afternoon, Mayor and counsel. The item before us tonight is the purchase of the server storage hardware. In 2020, the city implemented a centralized storage solution using a Dell compelling, Storage Area Network, or SAN for short, at our data center. The system supports the city virtual infrastructure, and that's our virtual servers. Associated data hardware support ends in 2026. The expenditure is necessary to upgrade the city's storage and networking infrastructure to meet our current and our future demand. So we worked with GTS and Dell engineers, and the following proposal components for the storage refresh and network project was two Dell power stores, 500T storage appliance. And one of those will be actually housed in the city, in IT. The other one will be housed at the police headquarters to give us that backup that we're looking for. This will expand the city's storage capability, safeguards the current city data, and add much-needed redundancies in event of future failures. The two power stores appliances are quoted through the Texas DIR contract in the amount of $285,330. And our recommendation is that the city manager is designated to be authorized to execute the purchase of the storage replacement from GTS Technology Solutions, a valued added reseller through the State of Texas Department of Information DIR contract, in the amount of $285,330. And I will be available for any questions.
Thank you, sir. There are no questions. Madam Secretary.
Thank you.
RS 25099, consider a memorandum resolution awarding bid number 2529 Overlay Milling to Asphalt Incorporated LLC, doing business as Lone Star Paving.
Thank you. Let the record show Councilwoman Cobb is present, and Counselor Mr. Zager has the next two items. Good afternoon, Mr., well, this one was three items on the agenda. Good afternoon, Mr. Zager.
Good afternoon, Mayor and fellow councilmembers. So we're here for the bid award for our overlay and milling contract. City Colleen, again, we maintain approximately 566 lane miles, our centerline lane miles of roadways. On March 23, let's kind of give a little background of our street fee. So on March 23, '21 is when the city council increased our street maintenance fee to $10 per single-family home or single-family equivalent for when we look at commercials. Those funds are collected through the street fees, and they're used for maintenance through our public works. There are also maintenance by contracts through engineering now, which is our overlays, our pressure pave that we were here for a couple of months ago, and then also the street replacement capital projects, and then the bond repayment from the 22 bond for the street fees, so those streets that are getting replaced. This mill and overlay contract is a two-year contract, so we are contracted with the contractor for two years. There'll be an increase, depending on whatever the market, they may have an increase based on old prices. But we do have them locked in for two years, so we can proceed with our overlays. Bids were open on May 8. We had three bidders. Asphalt Inc., which is now, used to be Lone Star Paving, Pinnacle Paving, and Texas Material Group. Asphalt Inc. slash Lone Star Paving provided the lowest overall unit prices for milling, overlay, striping, all the things that we will be included in this type of work. Let's see, the budget for this year for our mill and overlay is $1,437,735.20. The locations that we're planning on milling overlaying this year would be West Cliff, Bacon Ranch, and Little Nolan, West Jasper Drive, Tremere, Old Florence, and Cody Poe. And we have a map here that shows where the locations of those streets are. We're going to keep milling until we run out of money. And if we run out of money, then we may start tackling on Elm Road, depending on where we're at. And recommend, our staff, we recommend the city council award the bid for the overlay and milling to Asphalt Inc. LLC, DBA Lone Star Paving, authorize city manager designated to enter into contract asphalt, and authorize city manager designated to execute any change orders within the amount stated by state law.
Mr. Zager, for the overlay and milling, do you have a list where you rotate different roads?
We do. So this is based on, if you remember the last presentation we did with pressure pave. So TransMap contract a couple of years ago, where they scanned every road. They drove over a road, they ranked them from one to essentially zero to 100, based on the lasers and the cracks and everything. Those kind of show where a road falls in maintenance, whether it's a cracked ceiling, something a little cheaper. As it goes down the curve, the lower the number, we start looking at what other type of things we can do. The local roads, we're doing pressure pave. These are the ones that are kind of lower down on that curve, so we want to do the mill and overlay. After this point, then you start looking at if they drop lower on the roads of these rankings, then you look at a more of a replacement type thing. So we have a list, but we kind of rank them by those numbers, and then we try to spread them out through the city as best we can to kind of get more bang for the buck.
Thank you, and thank you for explaining that, because that's going to lead to where I was going. If we're limited on funding, and it's just, because this is not my field, I'm just a question proposed to you, wouldn't it be better if we would, and I'm just asking a question, utilize the funds on our high-traffic roadway?
We have. Last couple of years, we did focus on the arterials. So we're so, we're actually caught up really good on the arterials, and that's why we started hitting more of the residential streets. These are kind of those other arterials that we still haven't hit yet with the mill and overlay. That's one reason we brought in that pressure pave, is something that can sort of target the residential streets, those low-volume roads. So when we're doing mill and overlay, we first focus on the higher-volume roads and see where we are with that, and then we would go into the neighborhoods.
Yes, sir. Thank you, and there's no questions. But I know you have two more items.
Okay.
Madam Secretary.
RS 25100, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing contract amendment number two with MRB Group PC for the community and senior center expansion and renovations in the amount of $84,380.
Okay. So this is an amendment with MRB Group, who is the consultant that we're using for inspection services, and the ones that are out there day-to-day on the construction of the community center. They're kind of our eyes and ears for this project, working with the contractor, making sure that we're seeing everything that goes on. In background and history, obviously, in 2020 is when the project was, you know, for the community center was included in the capital improvement project. It was kind of an assessment after the Bob Gilmore Center was found to be structurally unsound and later demolished. On May 23, that's when the city council approved the construction contract with HCS for the Rosa Herford Community Center. And then on May 22, that's when we entered the contract with MRB to provide the inspections and the computer, the construction monitoring. And then we did issue a contract amendment with, let's see, excuse me, October 22, that's when we did the change order for the community center to add the roof. So we added a lot more scope to that project. It also extended the days of how long that project's going to last. We issued an amendment with MRB to kind of help extend their contract to match with the roof. But then, as you've seen with the weather, you know, it's hard to put a roof on when it's raining. We've had some delays due to weather, some unexpected changes that they've seen in the building. When they open up, they find some things. And also, there are some things that the contractor's kind of done that extended the time. So in order for us to have someone out there watching this job, we needed to extend more time to the, to MRB. The reason we're here is because we're over that $50,000 limit, which then we were presenting this to council. This contract is, amendment is for $84,000, and this is, working with the consultant, this is enough to get to the timeframe where we expect the project to be completely done. And obviously, if they don't use it all, then we just close the contract with whatever remaining funds are in there. Just to kind of give the heads up, we are working on this project. We are anticipating right now in the schedule to be open, or finish opening up around August, but there's still some issues with the roof. We're working with the contractor. Whether we can get this done near the end of August or September, we're still working it out with the contractor, but it is going to be kind of that end of summer, early fall, when we'll be able to open that thing up. And then staff, we recommend that the city council essentially just execute the amendment number two with MRB for $84,380, so we can have them out there watching what's going on.
Yes, sir.
There are no questions. Madam Secretary.
RS 25101, consider a memorandum resolution authorizing change order number four for the Chaparral Pump Station project with SSP Industries LP in the amount of $47,383.
Okay. So this is for, change order number four with our Chaparral Pump Station project. This is over there right by the new storage tank. So this is the pump station building and pump and generators, everything that's going on right in front of it. So on February 27, city council awarded the construction contract for $7,916,365 to SSP Industries LP for the construction of that pump station. Project's located, essentially, at the same site as the newly constructed Chaparral Elevated Storage Tank, and is right now at 60% complete. Change orders 1, 2, and 3 have been previously approved, and they are all under the threshold for council approval. This one is still under it, but since we're already talking about change order number four, we want to be a little more transparent, also bring the council aware of where we are with this project, so we use this opportunity to come to you and then work with this change order. So this change order is an increase for $47,383, and it's really dealing with overflow. So in the event the pump station has to discharge somewhere, it's a flume that'll get it to a drainage tract right next door. So it's a kind of directing, in the event something happens with that pump station. The existing overflow drainage is being reconstructed, essentially slow down, spread out, redirect the flow. So I got ahead of myself to an existing So, I got ahead of myself to an existing stock pond and then drains out. The timing, the sense of timing, the other thing is we just recently approved three and, you know, change order three and four is right here, was a week later. We're like, kind of throws a red flag, why we want to bring it to council and make sure we're really transparent. So, when someone sees that, we start approving multiple change orders. We want to make sure that everyone's aware of what's going on. Again, this change order increase is for one through four, so all the changes, $129,543.19. And it's only a 1.64% increase. And that's things that we've kind of encountered through the, you know, through the pump station, electrical conduit, little things that pop up that you just can't see through the design. And then we had one where we had to relocate the, the one pipe going to Chaparral. We found some conflicts in there from the Turnbull Ranch Utilities and we had to kind of do a little bit of changes on that. Our recommendation is authorize city manager, in order to designate to execute change order number four for $47,383 to with SSP Industries LP.
Thank you. Mrs. Zager, am I understanding you? You say the change orders are not the contractor, it's just things that happen?
It could be. It could be things that pop up. So, it's not, when you have the original plans, you have the original bid, you have this amount, you're going in there. But there may be things that pop up during construction, unforeseen changes that, you know, maybe the design, some things don't quite fit and we have to do a little change to the contractor and it may raise the price. In this instance, there was one big one, I think it was number three or two, where the pipe, when it goes from the, you know, from the pump station, from the tank to pump station, there was a pipe that was gonna connect to Chaparral. Well, the alignment we had, we were opening it up and then we found another utility line that was tied to the Turnbull Ranch. They put theirs off into a different location. And we had to make some adjustments in order to get our line to Chaparral, a little different location, had some adjustments, realignment, and then added some more lines and added more cost to the project. So, there's little things that pop up. When you open up the ground, you may see something that surprises you. You have to add a little change and, and those result in a change order because it's gonna cost more, it's more that isn't absorbed in, into the original contract. So, that's the reason we do these change orders.
Madam City Attorney, please tell me if I'm, I'm off the agenda when I ask my next question. Just stop me, please. So, I guess my question is to you, because this is not my first time hearing something like this. Well, we have utilities underground that we didn't know about. I just don't know when I get ready to ask you this question. So, when we have development throughout the city and people come and they want to develop and lay pipe, the utility line, I should say, do we not have, because I don't know, do we not have some kind of map or graph to show us where everything is located when we go out there?
So, we, we're responsible for our own utilities. So, we have our water and sewer lines and our storm lines, our storm pipes and drainage pipes. Depending on when they were built, we may still have the records for them. There may be things that were built in the past that records were lost. And it's kind of that best guess, you know, it's like, well, this is our standard, we haven't really surveyed them yet. We're working on that. We have our GIS going out there, group, they're going out verifying water and sewer lines. And so, we, we have a good chance on our utilities. But there's also gas lines, there's fiber optic lines, there's telecommunications. Those are utilities that we don't have record of. And we can only best ask the utility companies whether they give it to us. Sometimes they don't even know. Their records can be terrible. Gas companies are notorious, say, well, we're at three feet and lo and behold, it's 18 inches deep or it's somewhere else. And it usually, you find out during construction what's right and what's wrong. It's, it happens more often than not.
Mr. Zager, first I want to thank you for your transparency. That is, I think the community welcome that. I think that's very important. And thank you, you are detailed. So, if someone come and say, we don't know what's underground, well, you made it clear why sometimes when you get in a project, that you find these things and doing the project, that they're there. So, we have two questions. One is for Councilwoman Cobb and also Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Mayor. Sir, I'm along the lines with the mayor right now. I'm not understanding. If you, if you make a bid on something, rain, shine, sleet or snow, do you not just take that amount of money you bid it on? As a person who maybe have to sort dress and I find out that you get bigger and I say, well, no, it's not gonna cost any more money. Because if you made a bid and you've looked at it, you did an estimate, I understand old pipes, I understand pipes that maybe don't work or water that's coming from another place, shouldn't your bid and your estimate have just because money in it?
There, we started doing like a contingency item, you know, in our bids and a lot of our projects. That's that miscellaneous construction item. We, actually, I think it was Watercrest where we had an item come to council where we had to do a change order to put money into that item. It's kind of our catch-all for little mistakes, little things. When you, when a contractor bids, you know, it's based on what the contract, what the bid, bid is. On most projects, we have unit prices. We call out how many linear feet of curb, how many square feet of, of asphalt, how much, you know, how much rock, how many linear feet of pipe. We have plans, engineered plans that were drawn out by an engineer. That is, you know, they do their design based on information they get from surveyors. And the surveyors, when they're looking at, or, or there's a, what they call a SUI, which is a company comes out and tries to verify where all those utilities are. It's all best, based on the best information that they have available. If the information isn't there, you get the surprises, you get those things. A contractor is responsible for what they bid on the documents. So, if there is 100 linear feet of pipe, but then we have a change order that we have to now do 120, they have to have something that says that we're gonna pay them for that extra 20 feet of pipe. And that's what the change orders are. It's a change in the contract to adjust the work that's being done.
And we should be responsible because you didn't make a good judgment?
So, it's based on our design.
I get what you're saying. You all do an excellent job, but I'm along the lines like, wow.
It's the unforeseens. Contractors are gonna bid what they have. Now, if they do something wrong, a contractor builds something that doesn't match the plans, that goes on the contractor, we're not gonna bring, we're not gonna pay him to fix things. If there's things that we don't know about and we find surprise that we have to add work to a contract, we pay the contractor for the work they do. But again, we expect to be done right. So, that's, that's the whole part about managing these projects is we're checking to see if, you know, if a contractor goes and does a bunch of work that wasn't approved, it's not on the plans and then they want to be paid for it, usually we say no. But if it's something that's justified, we've reviewed it, we proved it is something that really needed to be done, like the extra 20 feet of pipe, well, then that's, that's where we've, we're responsible for paying that contractor.
Well, that really rests me when you say that you just don't pay them if they do something extra or it's because it's extremely needed and just because they say it, it's not a change order.
Yes. We have to approve everything they do. We review and check everything to make sure. If it gets to this point where we're doing a change order, that means it's either reviewed by us and the engineer on the site, been verified, we're not just filling these things out. We want to make sure that it's, what's being done is being done right.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one question here, maybe two. Mrs. Zager, with all the changes taking place, and we know you got changes, you, you can't, as you do the work, you discover things that need to be taken care of that you didn't know before. This is only like $47,380. This is in the budget. I, I just, so the citizens would know that this is covered.
So, typically, when we have a budget, we have an amount, we have a set amount in the, in the budget. You know, the bid may come in lower than that, we keep that, that amount there. It's in a contingency for those things that may arise. Like we did with Watercrest, we, we knew when the bids came low, we left the money in the account because we knew there was something most likely was gonna pop up and we did. So, we do make sure that when we do let a project out for construction, that we have some sort of contingency, some sort of padding that we know for wall construction, that we can cover it. If not, then it's a fun exercise to go through the budget to find out where we're gonna get the money. And that, that happens sometimes too, where we make sure it's in the budget, it's in the CIP. We're not gonna, you know, eliminate, you know, something unless we, you know, or delay a project. I mean, those, those are the things we try to have to do while we're working on these projects.
Great, sir. I just wanted to make it clear for, for the residents. Thank you.
And the money is in the budget?
It is.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that. Councilmember Kendrick.
My question is, thank you, Madam Mayor. My question is, do we have anything in place like sanctions for these utility companies? If we're having to spend, I know you say that the money is there, but is there something in place or that can be put in place to where when they can't tell us where things are, that they share part of that cost?
Usually that's done through construction. I've done this in other projects, other, other cities and that. If we find that it's a cause, it's something that's a cause of utility, they're delaying, they are, we can hold them responsible. It's, it's a long process. You can go and send the letters, threatening letters, tell them, you know, and it may end up going through the attorneys when we get to that point. But if it is something where, you know, these utility companies have something where they're not in a place or it's delaying a project and it's adding cost to the, for the city, either through a franchise agreement, we do have certain ways to try to reimburse or recoup those funds to the city.
Okay, because that's some of the questions that I've been getting throughout the constituents about that, so.
So, yeah, typically we do is when we see a project and we know that the utilities or things have to be moved, depending on the franchise agreement, there's a certain amount of days we notify utility contractors. So, say Encore, we have agreement with them, we have to notify them 120 days ahead of time to move their stuff. If it's a roadway widening project, there are certain things based on agreement where we can say it's on your cost or it's on your dime. You know, not only do you have to pay for it, but you've gotta get it moved in 120 days. Or if you're delaying our contractor, we're gonna come after you for whatever additional, you know, delay claims or whatever we're gonna receive, we're, we'll push it to the utility contractor saying you're gonna be responsible for that.
Thank you for that because that's a big transparency to where our citizens can actually see that, that that's part of the process. Thank you.
Like I stated, Mr. Zager, your team does an excellent job. But when you hear the word change order, people just automatically assume it's our fault, not understanding what you did tonight, this afternoon, in detail why these change orders was needed to bring before the council. Thank you.
Thank you.
RS 25102, consider a memorandum resolution granting an operating authority to Panda Taxi. And this item is mine. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
Chapter 29 of the Code of Ordinances states an individual must obtain an operating authority approved by the city council by submitting an application fee and supporting documentation. Once approved, the operating authority is valid for five years and is non-transferable. Each vehicle must display a vehicle permit obtained from the city secretary's office renewed by December 31st each year. And drivers must obtain a driver's permit from the police department. An application was received from Panda Taxi on May 8th. The taxi service will be operating one vehicle. And the city secretary's office found that the application is complete and complies with the city's Code of Ordinances.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mayor, just real quick, I'm almost done. Financial impact before you is the current fiscal year. Vehicle permits for operating throughout the city are 125 each. Airport permits are 50 each. And the operating authority, which was paid, is $300 every five years for a total of $475. And then you will see for fiscal years 2026 through 2030 how much the city may collect in fees. And it is staff's recommendation that city council grant the operating authority to Panda Taxi. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Madam Secretary, you may not have the answer to this. How many taxi services we have in Clean?
Less than a handful now.
Oh.
They, they've really gone down with the rise of Uber and Lyft and services like that.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. When I'll be ready, Madam Secretary.
RS 25103, consider a memorandum resolution declaring a vacancy on the Planning and Zoning Commission and appointing a commissioner to fill the unexpired term.
Thank you. How are you doing, Mrs. Messer?
I'm well, thank you. How are you?
Great.
All right, so this is considering an appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission on September 17th. As you know, the council appointed Mr. Pineda to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And on May 7th, he submitted his resignation. So, we currently have 24 applications on file for the Planning and Zoning Commission and staff is requesting that the council appoint a citizen to fill that vacancy.
Thank you for that. Any recommendations? Yes, Miss, anybody, I'm sorry, before you answer, yes, ma'am. Did you have a question, ma'am?
No, Madam Mayor. I was just going to say that the applications were sent to city council from the city secretary's office for review.
Councilwoman Cobb, oh, Councilmember Adams, I mean, Mayor Proton.
I'm Amy Michael Boyd.
Yes, sir. Do you have a recommendation? Did you look through the names? But do you have a comment? Okay. Councilwoman Cobb, before I call for the vote. Councilmember Kendrick. You want me to hold? Okay. Okay, Council, sorry, I don't have a slide, but I'm waiting on Councilmember Kendrick going through the names. Yes, ma'am.
And the, and the vote will be in regular session, but if the nominee, if everybody accepts this nomination as the, as the name that will be going forward.
Yeah, so if this is, and this is the thing, if you hadn't gone through, I'm not just saying this, if you haven't, if you have somebody, you just want to make sure they want to. And I see your face and I read your lips. So, can we, she wants, Councilwoman Cobb just want to call the person to verify if they would like to serve. So, can we, I read your lips too. He wants time to call the person too. So, can we bring the names up in our, when we get ready to vote on it, Madam City Attorney?
Definitely. You can pull this from consent and vote on it separately and have the names.
All right, so we're gonna pull this, if that's okay. Can I get a, do we have to make a motion to pull it from, oh, when we get to consent, okay. Yes, ma'am. We'll vote on that separate. There are no more questions. Thank you. Madam Secretary.
PH 25030, hold a public hearing and consider ordinances authorizing the issuance of water and sewer revenue bonds, Series 2025, and combination lease and airport revenue bonds, Series 2025.
Thank you. Good afternoon, ma'am. And all the reason I pronounce your name, so can you say your name?
Sure. Lori Ann Luciano.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. So, as stated, I will be presenting the water and sewer revenue bond and combined lease and airport revenue bond. On April 1st, staff initiated the discussion of issuing revenue bonds for water and sewer and airport. On May 19th, a conference call was held with a rating agency and confirmed a double-A rating. On June 9th, the notice of sale and official statement were distributed to potential bidders. Today, we are presenting the process and bid results. The revenue bond issues are $37.5 million bond issue for water and sewer infrastructure. The estimated debt service is partially covered in the current rate structure and will be included in the FY 2026 budget. And the $3.55 million bond issue for GRK Office Building, which is supported by lease income and airport revenue pledge. These are the projects included in the bond for water totaling $27.5 million. And then at the top are the sewer projects totaling $9.5 million, making the total water and sewer revenue bond at $37.5 million. The airport lease revenue bond total is $3.55 million. At this time, I would like to introduce Dan Wegmiller from Specialized Public Finance to talk about the bond process.
Thank you. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, City Manager Dan Wegmiller with Specialized Public Finance. As part of this process for the water and sewer revenue bonds, we had to apply for a bond rating with Standard and Poor's. That process, they look at the financial performance of the city, the economy of the city. They look at the debt levels of the city, and they also look at management aspects of the city. And that rating that they assign to these bonds are then used to take forward to the investor community, and they make decisions on whether or not to bid or buy your bonds based on that credit report. So the, one thing I wanted to do is read you some of the commentary. This is what investors are reading to make decisions on whether to bid today. The rating of double A, which is two notches from the highest rating possible of triple A. The Standard and Poor's noted, "The residential customer base and position as a major regional economic center in central Texas anchored by Fort Cavasus, the largest single-site employer in the state, leads to the economic strength." What we see is affordable rates for the city of Colleen and the area reflected in your water and sewer rates. It also noted, "Good operational management practices and policies, which includes sufficient contract supply and treatment capacity for long-term demand of water. Moderately low leverage position or debt based on a debt to capitalization ratio of about 31% and no additional near-term debt plans. Financial policies reviewed as good with quarterly budget updates to the city council, long-term financial and capital plans, and formalized liquidity and debt policies." Again, these are all things you all know, but this is what the investor community is looking at, trying to decide. And right now, there's a lot of issues coming to market. So it is important when they get this, it's kind of like your credit report that a bank or a credit agency provides you. So that's on the water and sewer bonds. For the airport lease revenue bonds, these are solely secured by the lease for the facility as well as airport revenues. And so there is no bond rating, there is no cost paid for that. And so this was provided to local and regional banks and national banks to see their interest in bidding on that lease revenue bond. The results that came in, the water and sewer revenue bonds, I have to say, I've been doing this for over 30 years now, and working with you all for, for those years. I think this is the most I've ever seen bid on a single issue for the 37-plus million. We had 15 bidders that submitted bids to buy your water and sewer revenue bonds in total. The winning bid was Janie Montgomery Scott LLC out of Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, at a 4.29022% interest rate. I also have to say, I believe this is the first time I've ever seen them bid on an issue. It just shows the appetite for bonds right now, but also high quality. That's what produces a high number of bids. So that's an outstanding result. On the lease revenue bonds, we had over 40 different banks look at the lease revenue bond. The, the winning bid submitted to this was First National Bank. Again, we went local, regional, and other banks. First National bid a 7.62% interest rate, again reflecting, there is no tax pledge, there's no water and sewer, there's no writing on this. It's just pure lease and airport revenue, but they were comfortable enough, they submitted a 15-year bid. It's also callable anytime. So I believe we'll have an opportunity to refinance this down once the, the tenant and occupant gets business going, and we can go back to some banks and again, go through a very streamlined process. So we recommend on this one as well, going with the First National Bank bid. But that is an overview of the bids and the process we went through.
Thank you.
Staff recommends city council approve the ordinance authorizing the issuance of water and sewer revenue bond Series 2025 and combination lease and airport revenue bond Series 2025. Now at this time, myself, Mr. Wegmiller, or I have Angela Vila from McCall, Parkhurst, and Horton, our bond counsel, is available to address any questions you may have.
Thank you. So Mr. Kegel and your staff, thank you for the hard work and the finance side of the house. The city of Colleen is doing a great job in managing our revenue and our taxpayers' dollars. So thank you all for a great job. With that being said, councilmember Sagara.
Thank you, Mayor, and I echo what you just said. I think that this is a testament of the proof. Because a lot of times, you know, we can sit up here and say that our finances are being managed correctly and all that, but, you know, we don't have the view that, the people that really go into this deep to really make a decision. You know, it's like people buying a house, everybody wants to buy one, but it's, when it comes down to it, you got to go through that stringent process of credit review, money and all that. And that's what, kind of what the city has to go through in order to get such a good rating and all that. But my question is, because you mentioned First National Bank, and there is a lot of First National Banks out there. I was just curious, is that the First National Bank that's local here, or is that a different one?
You know, we, we haven't reached out and confirmed that yet, but I believe it is part of that same network of banks. It was submitted out of Dallas, but it's got to be the same, same network.
That would be good. I think that, you know, having a local bank here that really invests in our community, I don't think that's ever happened before, but I would look forward to see if that, that's truly them or not, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
PH 25031, hold a public hearing and consider a memorandum resolution approving the proposed fee schedule for fiscal year 2026 to be effective October 1, 2025.
Yes, ma'am.
I have this item as well. And so the last two council meetings, we went over the 2026 proposed budget fee increases. By city charter, they require public hearing for any fee increases. And our financial governance policy requires all fees to be included in a fee schedule except for the following rates set by ordinance as approved by city council. And then here's just the fee schedule process, and then right here on the budget calendar, we're here today, June 17th, to hold the public hearing. At this time, would you like me to review any of the proposed fees again, or do you have any specific questions?
So council, this slides was, have, we have gone over the slides. Would you like for her to go? Counselwoman Cobb, I didn't see your head. You want her to go back through them? Oh, okay. No, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
PH 25032, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Tracy Hanson on behalf of Academy for Exceptional Learners, case number Z 2511, to rezone approximately 6.656 acres being Lot 1, Block 1, Fowler Elementary subdivision from R1 Single Family Residential District to R1 Single Family Residential District with a conditional use permit to allow a daycare facility as a permitted use. The subject property is locally addressed as 1020 Tremere Road, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Council, Mrs. Mesher also have the next item. Welcome back, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. This item is for a conditional use permit for the property located at 1020 Tremere Road. If approved, the request for a conditional use permit would allow for the property to be used as a daycare facility. Site currently operates as a private K-12 school for children with special needs, and it also includes a daycare component, components serving children ages six weeks to 12 years of age. Property is located within the neighborhood infill area on the growth sector map and designated campus on the future land use map. Staff finds that the request is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The red star here indicates the location of that property. This is an aerial of the site. As you can see, this was an, an old elementary school, which was converted to a charter school. On a recent site inspection, we discovered that there was a daycare component as well. Daycare facilities are not allowed in the R1 zoning districts. The intent here is just to add that conditional use permit overlay to allow the daycare use. This is a view of this, the school from Tremere. The adjacent property is looking south on Tremere. This is off of Hermosa Drive and facing north on Tremere. We notified 114 surrounding property owners, and we received two written responses in support. This is the notification boundary. With that, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit. And the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 12th also recommended approval of the request by a vote of five to zero.
Thank you. It's, it's not that often that a conditional use permit that y'all give out, but it's for a good cause, a daycare center in that area. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Secretary.
PH 25033, hold a public hearing and consider a city-initiated request, case number Z 2512, to rezone approximately 6.789 acres being Lot 1, Block 2 of the Julius Alexander Industrial Subdivision, and part of Lots 1 and 2 of the Julius Alexander Industrial Subdivision, replat number 2 from R1 Single Family Residential District to R3A Multi-Family Apartment Residential District. The subject properties are locally addressed as 506 Liberty Street and 2607 and 2703 Atkinson Avenue, Colleen, Texas.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, this item is a city-initiated request for city-owned property on Liberty Street. If approved, the subject property will be developed as an emergency homeless shelter in accordance with the adopted homeless and mental health strategic plan. The proposed development will provide temporary emergency housing for individuals and families currently experiencing homelessness, as well as supportive assistance to transition from homelessness to permanent housing. The subject property is located within the neighborhood infill area on the growth sector map and designated campus and floodplain on the future land use map. The red star indicates the location of that property, and this is an aerial of the area to be rezoned. You'll recall that there were two previous rezoning requests for these properties. At that time, we rezoned portions of it, and this will rezone everything over there that's city-owned to R3A to allow for the proposed facility. This is a concept of the, the sprung building, the emergency homeless facility building. This is a view of the subject property from Liberty Street, view from Atkinson. This is the adjacent property on Liberty Street and adjacent property on Atkinson. Properties are within the Nolan Creek and Leon River watershed and are impacted by a riverine habitat. We notified 25 surrounding property owners, and we've received one written response in opposition. Again, this is the notification boundary. Quest is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and we are recommending approval as presented. Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And this is for our shelter that we're proposing to build? I want to make that clear to council. And I guess my question legal, can either one of you can answer this? And if I'm off the subject, please pull me back. Once we vote on this, if it's up or down in this area, and so happened that the council go another direction with the shelter. One of my concerns, and this is where you might have to stop me, is how are we going to finance it? And I know that's not the topic. So if we change, okay, I can't go that way because I see your face. I can see. So once we zone it, this, we can always come back and rezone it for something else.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Okay, let me, let me, okay, I'm back on track. All right. Thank you very much, no questions. Thank you. All right, we are now, we're at citizen comments. Heather McNegly, good afternoon. You have four minutes.
Good evening, council. I would like to really discuss the governing standards. With the standing council's decision to combine workshop and council meetings to the same day, only twice a month, starting at 3:00 PM, it has made it difficult for many residents to attend. Over 75% of the residents are employed with regular nine-to-five jobs. By having meetings at 3:00 PM, you have now not allowed most KISD workers, city employees, Alina Health, Scott &amp; White, CTC, Texas A&amp;M Central Texas, and active-duty service members to not be able to attend, nor an opportunity to speak unless they sign up in person before 2:59 PM. We can and should allow for citizens to be able to sign up for citizen comments online. Another issue is remote engagement. Again, this is a military town, and many contractors with remote work, to include myself, are Colleen residents that deploy, work abroad, out of state, and maybe in field trainings. But you remember, they still call Colleen their home. Why are they not able to participate via Zoom? Staff has stated it's against policy or practice, but yet the county allows residents to call in via Zoom, but the city does not, even though there is no policy stating other than that. And per Texas statute 551, does allow the governing body to rule if a member of public can testify at a meeting via remote location. You are the governing body, not city staff, but yet they are the ones making that decision. They are choosing who gets to participate and who gets to be able to have their voice heard, not the governing body. This is wrong and needs to be officially corrected in the new governing standards. We are a transient community. There are so many taxpayers that contribute, and you are silencing them. I am one of them. You are silencing your service members, you are silencing your schoolteachers, you're silencing your city staff. You're choosing who you want to hear from. Change the times of the meetings? Having workshop and then meeting right away? How are you all to be able to take in our comments and then decide that exact same night? If you're going to hold workshops and public, and public hearings, hold them on opposite meetings so you all have the time to do your research and hear everyone out. We appreciate what you're doing, but stop silencing us and start listening to your residents and change the governing standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, Mr. Fernino turned his paperwork working at 3:03. Is it okay? Y'all, good, good. Mr. Fernino, sir, please come up. You have four minutes, and good afternoon, sir.
I appreciate the accommodation, and the previous speaker has said nothing that I haven't said, and certainly no less passionately than I've said for the last several years. This nonsense of slowly but surely restricting our ability to speak, and the governing standards reflect that. I mean, nine times out of 10, when it's a sticking point, you don't follow your own, what it applies to yourselves. Case in point was not so long ago, a gentleman stood up here, rambled on for two minutes. All he did was praise you. He said nothing about what was on the agenda, and it was at the end of his comments, "Oh, well, I haven't been here in a while, and I just want to say what a good job you were." That was allowed. But the moment I get passionate about something, I've been gavelled the previous representative from District 4 violating standards, "Point of order, point of order!" because he didn't like being criticized on any point. That has got to change, which also dovetails into the marijuana legislation. Stop spending our money on a losing prospect. When you go into, when you go into closed session, whether you come outright and say it, speaking for myself, you have to admit, I was right. The outcome is as I predicted, and so did many others. But you defy state law, US Constitution, and then you expect us to follow your rules? That just doesn't quite fly. To restrict people's ability to speak as elected officials, you have to suffer the darts and the laurels, the praise and the condemnation, whether you like it or not. Nobody forced you to run. You're here by choice. So if you don't want the criticism, as long- So if you don't want the criticism, as long with the praise, I mean, as I said, there's, when it comes to things you want to hear from us, but lately, more and more, people are waking up to the fact that you only want to hear and you only want to deal with that which you agree with or somehow gets construed into being your own original ideas. Any new innovative outside-the-box thinking, be it from myself, other entities who come up here with absolutely fantastic, phenomenal presentations, consistently get shot down. I mean, when the governing standards has to be equal for everybody, I will stand here until the stars burn out when it comes to, if somebody comes up here and has something to say, whether I agree with it or not, they have the right. Reiterate, they have the right guaranteed by the Constitution to stand up here and say it. Whenever anybody's up here, you will never hear me interfere with somebody standing at this lectern with their God-given and constitutional rights being able to express it in full. Also, this nonsense of taking away, where you all slipped it away to where we can't speak on anything that is not on the agenda, coupled with the meeting schedule, that was a boneheaded idea. I'm sorry, it is. I agree with the previous speaker. May have been convenient for yourselves, but it is not convenient for the community to which you serve. That can't be in any contention whatsoever. But bring back the ability to speak on non-agenda items. I praise KISD's format for that. Everybody, you can speak on non-agenda items after they're spoken after. It's a very well-ordered way to do business on that. It's a simple change, because a lot of times, all we get is emails, "Thanks for the email, yours in service." That doesn't answer the question. It doesn't address it any further, and it doesn't carry the discussion forward.
Melissa Brown, you have four minutes.
Good afternoon. In total, the change order or amendment request to MRB Group is going to bring it to a $132,000 increase for a total of $254,480, which is more than double the original contract of $121,500 to supervise. And we have had them out there for how long? So we are more than doubling the amount of contract time that we had with them to validate more than doubling the expense of their contract. I agree with Ms. Cobb on this. If they're not out there working, then we don't have the engineer out there supervising. So what are we paying for if they're not out there supervising, if that's what this is supposed to be for at the senior center, just to have those engineers being there, out there day-to-day? If they're not physically there because work isn't being done, are we paying them just to have the length of time in total? That doesn't make any sense. We'll go the same thing with the change order on the pump station projects, bringing it to a total increase of $129,543.19. How did we not know, or the engineers designing this not know where Turbo's lines were? Even if they're not registered with the city because Turbo Ranch is not part of the city of Colleen, they still are mapped out with the county. I find it hard to believe that an engineering firm putting in these designs can't cross-reference where utility lines are at the county. I'm going to agree with the mayor, you should know where these lines are. You shouldn't start digging and then be like, "Oh, surprise, we have a utility line there." There are a lot of things already brought up about the way that the city council conducts the meetings and the governing standards. If you insist on keeping a 3 o'clock start time, which has not been the benefit that you thought it would, it hasn't made your meeting shorter, hasn't gotten you out of here any earlier, in fact, we're leaving later, we're just starting earlier, and you're being more rushed, you're not having the time to think and critically analyze what the citizens come up and say, because now we get one single opportunity to speak on a subject before you vote instead of two. If you're going to continue with this alternating weeks, then you need to go to a process where the work session allows citizen comment, and that is on the items you will be discussing for vote at the next meeting. Anything you're discussing for vote should also be able to have citizen comment. That should be what you discussed at the last workshop. Also, remember, there is nothing in the governing standards saying citizens have to have their paperwork turned in before the meeting starts. The governing standards say the council members are supposed to make us feel welcome and respected. I'll see that happening all the time. It says that there's a lot more responsibility on y'all than there is on us. Come in prepared and ready to go. If you're prepared and ready to go, please, let me ask why not a single person asked why we're doing 20% brokerage fees on the sale of property? I'll talk a little bit more in-depth about the leader drive cost at the public hearing, but I'm letting you know that 20% brokerage fees on a $15,000 property valued at $25,000 seems excessive to me.
Sean Price, thank you. Sean Price, good afternoon, you have four minutes.
Mayor.
Sir.
Yeah, I would like to echo the same sentiment from everybody else that's been up here this evening. But I would ask that we find out if it's abuse of power when, during the standards and expectations that the mayor has a right to throw people off of public lands because she disagrees with them and gavels them out. And then she forces the police chief to trespass them criminally from the property, from public land, right, without any razz whatsoever. Nobody committed a felony, nobody committed a misdemeanor. If you disagree with somebody and you get gavelled out and you toss them out of the meeting, that's the meeting. That's one thing. But when you throw them off the property, that's a violation of the 16th Amendment and the First Amendment. But that's what this body does, and every single one of y'all agree with it. And that's disturbing, because the only people that are getting thrown out are people like And you know what that means? If it was any other way, that would be described as racism. The nomination of Mr. Boyd, I disagree with. With all the other aspects in, what was that here? With the sale of this property, right? Will any of y'all's businesses be involved in any way, shape, or form? Those are my questions and my statements. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, counsel, we're going to take a 10-minute break. All righty, we're going to call this meeting back to order at 4:25, and I'd just like to say scholar stance. I just wanted to say hi, she's visiting us tonight, so I just want to say hi to her. With that being said, our consent agenda, counsel, as you know, we have an item that we're pulling, and that would be our commissioner, and that's RS 25-103. So whoever will be doing the motion, please pull that item. Can we get everybody back? All right. Can I get a motion to approve our agenda item?
Madam Mayor.
Counsel, yes, sir.
I move to approve the consent agenda minus RS 25-103.
Counselmember Solomon?
There's a caveat.
You going to pull it?
Yeah.
Okay, you pulling it?
Yeah, I need to add to the amendment because I think, let me pause before I confirm. The city attorney, if I may, there was an item where we did not, that the city staff pulled the sale of one of the properties. Do we need to remove that from, do we need to approve that pull?
If you approved it with the consent, you'd be approving the recommendation of staff.
Which is without the other property?
Right, just the one property.
Okay, thanks. Sorry for that. Now, move to approve the consent agenda minus RS 25-103 with the recommendations from staff.
Yes, sir. Counselmember Solomon?
Second.
All right, all in favor of the consent agenda? Yes, all opposed? Motion carries, five to zero. Counsel, RS-25-103 was pulled from the agenda. Madam Secretary, you had something you wanted to say about the nomination?
Well, I did not hear the nomination last time, but Michael Boyd did withdraw his application on Thursday, last Thursday.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
So he's no longer interested in being on PNC.
Yes, ma'am. Counselwoman Cobb.
Madam Mayor. I would like to make a nomination for this commissioner.
You had to speak into the mic.
I would like to make a nomination for Patrick Purfo with Blessed Properties, yes, sir.
Counselmember Kendrick, I heard you say, what'd you say? Are you second the motion? Counselmember Kendrick, I just heard you speak. Are you seconding the motion? Okay. And would you pronounce that name correctly?
Purfo, Patrick Purfo?
Purifoy.
Purifoy, okay.
All right, do we have any more nominations? Do we have any more nominations?
I'd like to nominate Bear Jones.
Okay, we have Bear Jones and Mr. Patrick, say that name again, Purifoy, okay. We have two nominations. Do we have any more nominations? Do we have any more nominations? All right, counsel, all in favor of Mr. Patrick Purifoy? Yes, all opposed? No? Oh, yes, go first.
Mayor.
Yes.
Since this is on here just as a straight resolution, so really, we would do it as a motion to appoint a certain person, and if there's a second, if there's a majority of people that want to vote for that person, rather than putting them both up at once.
But I was doing one at a time. I called Mr. Patrick first.
But if you do one at a, okay.
Okay, so how do we?
We need a motion for who somebody wants to appoint a person.
Okay, so we have, let me understand you correctly. So we have two individuals, and with that, a motion I know we have to make, now after that motion, the person, like Counselwoman Cobb, Patrick Purfo, she will have to make a motion for that one person, or you saying do both of them together? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Don't do both of them together. So the nominations are just, to put it out there, that these are the people you want to consider, but then, for discussion purposes, and then, but somebody needs to make a motion of who they actually want to appoint and see if a majority of people get that vote.
Okay, we do have, like Mr. Cagle, he heard it. We have a motion in a second already. That's where I was going with Patrick Purifoy. Counselwoman Cobb made the motion, and Counselmember Kendrick seconded. Now, for Bear Jones, we didn't have anyone, so I would just go on with the first one, Mr. Patrick.
That's fine. If that's what you heard, Mayor, I heard Counselmember Cobb nominate someone, and then I did hear a second, but I didn't ever hear an actual motion, and then I heard another nomination. But I just wanted to clarify.
Can we do that again? Thank you, Madam City Attorney.
Madam Mayor, I move and make a motion to accept Patrick Purifoy. Every time I say it the second time, I mess it up. Purifoy to the nomination for the commission board, to sir.
Counselmember Kendrick?
I'd like to make a nomination for.
Okay, you make, I'm sorry. Counselmember Solomon?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for Patrick Purifoy to be seated on the Planning and Zoning Committee. All in favor? Yes, all opposed? We have four to one with Counselmember Kendrick in opposition. So do you want to make that motion, Counselmember Kendrick? Okay, all right. So, Madam Secretary, we have Patrick Purifoy.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, now we can go to public hearing. Madam Secretary, whenever you read.
PH 25030, hold a public hearing and consider ordinances authorizing the issuance of water and sewer revenue bonds, Series 2025, in combination lease and airport revenue bonds, Series 2025. The captions of the ordinances read, "Ordinance of the City of Colleen, Texas authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Colleen, Texas combination lease revenue and airport revenue bonds taxable Series 2025 and the aggregate principal amount of $3,555,000, prescribing the form of said bonds, approving the purchase agreement, and enacting other provisions relating to the subject." Next caption, "An ordinance of the City of Colleen of the City of Colleen, Texas authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Colleen, Texas Water Works and Sewer System Revenue Bonds, Series 2025, providing for the security for and payment of said bonds, approving an official statement, a paying agent registrar agreement, and other agreements relating to the sale and issuance of the bonds, and ordaining other matters relating to the issuance of bonds, of the bonds."
Thank you. Counsel staff have gone through the slides. Would you like for them to go back through the slides? All right, we'll now have a public hearing. Public hearing is open. Mr. Sean Price, you have four minutes.
Okay, so my question is going to probably be Mr. Cagle. On the, on these bonds, the interest paid by the citizens of Colleen will accumulate to what amount overall? So this, the sale of these bonds are going to cost the citizens how much money in service debt? Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Brown.
This item is a prime example of why our request that the council reviews the formatting of the meetings, because the presentation that was given on this that included all of the interest rates, all of the service fees, and et cetera, is not available to the public, was not available to the public. The only time we've been able to see it was during that presentation that went up. So how many of you remember what the fees are from First National? How many of you remember what the total interest and the real interest and all of the combined interest costs are going to be? Because it was a really quick presentation. It's the It's the first time to, our knowledge in the public, that anyone in this building other than the people who came up to present it, and probably the city manager have seen The citizens need the opportunity and the time to review this, if you want to hear what our real feelings are. But I am going to say this, according to the way that our staff report is written up on this, this is going to come from an end-of-year budget amendment, FY twenty-five budget, to allocate the bond proceeds to the appropriate projects. An amendment is going to be required. Associated debt payments will be recurring and included in the future budgets. What we've seen already with the CO bonds that went out, is that fees are going to have to increase in order to pay for them. Without approximately 60% increases at the golf course, the golf course will not be able to pay for their revenue bonds. So, going forward, how much will we have to increase rates to customers for water and sewer, whether it's residential or commercial, to cover these bonds? Also, why is Chaparral Road included in this? Chaparral Water and Sewer should have been paid through the $45 million, 2020 Water and Sewer Bond. That was almost exclusively designed for Chaparral Road, minus $2 million, it was supposed to go to, I believe it was the Wolf Street lift station or pump station. The rest of that was all for Chaparral Road Water and Sewer. Why are we now having to come back with almost $9 million to put into it out of a second bond? How did we go so far astray from that original cost? This doesn't seem like it is exactly measured and proper spending. I don't think it's responsible. We're going $9 million over, and we had a $45 million bond on this five years ago, that we're, of course, still paying for. So for the next few decades, we get to pay for this again, but I can't tell you what the full cost is. I don't know what the full cost is. Can anybody tell me how this will affect my water and sewer rate? When we haven't seen and had time to analyze all of the information, the interest rate is going to be a big deal. Yes, we may still be at a double-way standing, but why are we all of a sudden, almost everything that's coming up is debt service, or it's, it's future-funded from budget amendments for year-end? Are we in that bad a shape financially? But again, this is why I would ask the council to wait on this, put that presentation out for the public to review, and vote on it next week. We can't be in, or in two weeks. We can't be in that much of a hurry on it. Let the council review that information and have a full understanding of it. Do what's right for the public. If you want to be transparent, be transparent. Give us the information. Let us evaluate it. Come back in two weeks when you've thought it over.
Public hearing closed. Can I get a motion to approve or disapprove PH dash twenty-five dash three zero? Counselor Member Solomon?
I make a motion to approve.
Can I get a second? Sir?
I make a motion to approve PH twenty-five dash zero three zero.
Is there a second? Counselor Member Proton?
I have a second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no? All in, all in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries five to zero.
PH twenty-five zero three one, hold a public hearing and consider a memorandum resolution approving the proposed fee schedule for fiscal year 2026 to be effective October 1st, 2025.
Thank you. Counsel staff went through the slides. Would you like for her to go back through the slides? All right, the public hearing is open. Ms. Heather Magninley, you have four minutes.
Good evening. There's a lot of fee increases. I'm not going to go into a lot of them. I disagree with most, but the biggest is the street maintenance fee. I myself have been paying a street maintenance fee since you implemented it, and there is, excuse me, not the street maintenance fee, the drainage fee. And I've had no drainage improvements, no drainage fixing, no drainage upkeep. There is overgrown drains all over the donut hole, but yet we pay a drainage fee, and you now want to increase that drainage fee that I'm going to be paying without receiving those services. So, you should reevaluate your services, and before you start increasing fees on people. I have not received any drainage help, but yet I pay it, and now you're going to tell me I must pay more drainage fees. Many of the council members, excuse me, not many, two of the council members have come out and seen that there's no drainage correction in my area, and knows that we've been paying for it. So I think that should be looked at. Instead of increasing fees, you should also look at also, you know, fixing those services. I just drove around down Onion. It is overgrown in the Tremere Creek bison there, so bad you can't even see through it. You go down Gilbert Estates, down Brookside, that drains into private land. But you want to increase drainage fees, but yet you're not even doing anything with those fees for the areas. Maybe you should reevaluate that program altogether, instead of just taking more money with less services. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa Brown, you have four minutes.
I'm going to start off with the, the one fee increase that I most strongly agree with. The fire department is asking for a $4,000 surcharge fee for electric fires, which is very low. I would ask double that. The blankets, that's assuming that an electric vehicle, only one blanket has to be used on that. We have to replace them each time. They're single-use only. It is for the health, the safety, and the welfare of not only our firefighters, but the general public also. Those blankets that they, they want to purchase are more effective than just putting water on an electric fire. I don't know why there would have been any question about that in the first place. If you can't afford a $4,000 fee, if your vehicle catches on fire, you probably can't afford to buy an electric vehicle these days either. So let's talk about some of the other fees near the service level. You know, all of the park fees that are increasing. Parks come out of our general fund. We pay taxes for them. You know, we paid the taxes, we pay the debt service for all of the buildings, but all of those fees are going to increase. All of these amendments that have been made, all of these increased payments for the Rosa Herford Community Center, isn't even open yet, and we're increasing the fees on it from what they used to be, because we have to pay for it somehow, right? See, what it looks like from the citizen's point of view, and what it looked like for me when I was sitting right there in those chairs, is that if you don't have enough tax base to pay for it, you're going to get the money out of people somehow, and you're going to do it by fees. Are we broke? Do we not have money? The golf course cannot afford to operate and pay back their bonds if you don't approve their fees. I know people who have been very loyal customers of Stone Tree, who will now not be using them after October 1, because the fees are too much for what we have in them for, I don't know, half a year. There's only going to be a nine-hole course there. So they're going to pay increased fees to only have nine-hole courses. We talk about the, the water and the sewer fees, you talk about, how about, let's talk about this, the developer fees. So when you have a developer who's coming back twice in a two-month span, who just got denied for a project, and they're coming back already with another option for it, and I'm surprised how quickly this zoning application was able to be reviewed, processed, and the letters be sent out, but 511 Cunningham Road is already coming back to planning and zoning on Monday. So instead of just putting out a fee, let's make them pay for every single notice, every single letter that has to be paid out, in addition to, because now we've paid double in two months, just so that, because they got told no the first time, they're going to come back with something else this quickly. You think that the citizens over there are any happier with that? And who ends up really fronting the cost of all of this? Y'all want to talk about us wasting staff time? Well, that seems like a waste of staff time. And then you're putting all of the citizens through all this pressure again. The 100% disabled veterans, you damn sure are going to get their money out of them, right, Mr. Cagle? You're going to feed out of them. You can't get the property tax, so you're going to get it from their fees. When we increase the commercial rates, remember, you are increasing the rates on apartment complexes. When you increase fees, remember, it affects renters. It affects whether or not we have affordable housing. And when you increase fees, remember that that affects the industry and the commercial and the businesses that will come in. They don't want to pay the higher cost either.
Sean Price?
The fees that, that are happening here, I'm still in question, because when it first came here, my neighborhood was supposed to have a $360,000 improvement in drainage. Now, the water backs up at the, I guess, the culvert overpass on Bryce Avenue, and backs up underneath the properties and everything. At least, the trailer of my house are on pier and beam, so we're not, we just walk in a swamp, essentially, for the day of the rain, as rushes through there. I don't know exactly what's broken, or why it doesn't flow as, as easily as it should into Nolan, Nolanville Creek, but there was a plan, and this body right here, right, took the money away and gave it to some other use. And we're spending a lot of money for all these other projects, and they're getting over cost, so these fees are just, I'm just getting amazed, is that you're going to keep taxing us, keep taxing us, and keep taxing us, right? Or keep taxing the businesses, which then passes it on to us. It's just, we all know this. It's just, that's the nature of the beast. And it's not easy to sit there and move the money around and make the magic hat, pop out the bunny rabbit to fix the problem. I got that, and I understand that. But it's not going to get easier for us by next year with these fees. You keep raising these fees on retirees like me, right, you'll price us out of our house. You've already, I mean, taxes are going up on property already, because the county wants to do certain projects themselves. So it's just, one hand is just paying the other, and it goes back and forth. But the ideas keep hurting everybody else, and that's all of us out here, right? I'm just saying, take a broader look at all the fees that you're actually putting out there, and, and I get it, there's a lot of good people that are doing excellent work in our city, right? We got good services. We got great services in the city, but it's getting overpriced, and it's getting unattainable for a lot of folks that live on meager, meager means. So people are thinning their belts out here, but up here, we're spending it, because we're well over $285 million in debt as a city. I'm saying, we need to start looking at, stop spending, and fix the stuff that we just need to fix. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Public hearing is closed. Counselwoman Cobb.
I would, I would just like to say something in reference to the donut hole, as one of the representatives, and as a livable person, that's alive and well, and see what happens every day. That, I know that doesn't make sense, the statement, but it, it has to make sense. I voted yes with that developer, because for the first time in over four years, I saw a developer change his mind, put in a contract, and make recommendations to make our area better. I've never seen a person who will go back and would take the time and would call and would listen and see things.
Counselwoman Cobb, you off the agenda.
Okay, I, I don't have anything to say.
Thank you. Can I get a motion to approve PH dash twenty-five dash zero three three? Counselor Member Solomon?
So move, I make a motion to approve.
Just to clarify, zero three one?
Twenty-five, PH dash twenty-five dash zero three one. Sorry about that, ma'am.
Dash zero three one.
Yes, sir. Did you, will you say that again for the record?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to approve of PH dash twenty-five dash three one.
Zero three one. Counselor Missagala?
I second that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam City Attorney, for catching that. All in favor, yes. Motion carries. I couldn't read the numbers, so. Oh, reset, would you vote again, please? It went on, went off real quick. Motion carries five to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH twenty-five zero three two, hold a public hearing and consider an ordinance submitted by Tracy Hanson on behalf of Academy for Exceptional Learners, case number Z twenty-five eleven, to rezone approximately 6.656 acres, being Lot One, Block One, Fowler Elementary subdivision from R one, Single Family Residential District, to R one, Single Family Residential District, with a conditional use permit, to allow a daycare facility as a permitted use. The subject property is locally addressed as 1020 Tremere Road, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, an ordinance amending the city of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of Lot One, Block One, Fowler Elementary subdivision from R one, Single Family Residential District, to R one, Single Family Residential District, with a conditional use permit, to allow a daycare facility as a permitted use, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, Mrs. Mesher went through the slides. Would you like for her to go back through the slides? Public hearing is open.
Going to keep this as short and sweet as I am. I support this, but I didn't sign up for this public hearing. Thanks.
Since my words are hollow to you, and since any statement that I make goes in one ear and out the other, yeah, I'll reserve myself on them next to.
Public hearing closed. Counselor Member Solomon? We on PH dash twenty-five dash zero three two?
Yes, ma'am.
We need a motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve PH dash twenty-five dash zero three two.
Counselor Member, I mean, Mayor Proton?
Madam Mayor, I second the motion.
All in favor, yes. Motion carries five to zero. Madam Secretary, whenever you're ready.
PH twenty-five zero three three, hold a public hearing and consider a city-initiated request, case number Z twenty-five twelve, to rezone approximately 6.789 acres, being Lot One, Block Two, of Julius Alexander. 6.789 acres being Lot 1, Block 2 of Julius Alexander Industrial Subdivision and part of lots 1 and 2 of the Julius Alexander Industrial Subdivision, replat number 2 from R1 Single Family Residential District to R3A Multifamily Apartment Residential District. The subject properties are locally addressed as 506 Liberty Street and 2607 and 2703 Atkinson Avenue, Colleen, Texas. The caption of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending the City of Colleen zoning ordinance by changing the zoning of Lot 1, Block 2 of Julius Alexander Industrial Subdivision and part of lots 1 and 2 of the Julius Alexander Industrial Subdivision, replat number 2 from R1 Single Family Residential District to R3A Multifamily Apartment Residential District, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting provisions, providing for an effective date."
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Counsel, Mrs. Messer went through the slides. Would you like for her to go back through the slides? Councilmember McCobb, Solomon? Is that, no? All right. Public hearing is open.
I don't normally speak on city-initiated requests, but I'm going to on this one because I cannot state how strongly I disagree with the zoning at this location. We're going to take a flood zone and use it for homeless shelter and transitional living apartments or units or however you're going to do the transitional housing. If you ever go past the homeless shelter over on Sprott and go ahead and take a look at the litter and the trash that ends up on the ground, imagine that in the flood zone, in the drainage, in the creek. You will be directly contributing to that, directly contributing. Also, what you're telling our homeless population is that the only thing you're worth is being put in a flood zone? Let's just toss you over there where you're out of sight, out of mind, where we can't do anything else with that land, so we're just going to put a homeless shelter there. You know what we normally do with flood zones? We turn them into parks because when it's not raining, people don't go to the park anyway. The homeless still have to go to the homeless shelter even when it's raining, even when the area is flooded, unless the city plans on redesigning the flood zone in that area, which is going to cost us even more. Plus, the council still hasn't decided if you want to take the approximately $4 million right now that you would need to take out of the budget to put the shelter up and build the shelter. Mr. Cagle, at the budget presentation, told the council, you're going to have to make some hard decisions, including whether or not you want to move forward on this project at this time. My suggestion is that you don't. There are better locations, there are different locations. Putting them in a flood zone right next to a stream is not the answer. Throwing them out of their way, away from all of their accessible needs, everything that they know, is not the answer. Putting them near a high school, near a private school over at the Catholic school, putting them within walking distance of the elementary school, closer proximity, you're not going to help anybody. We care about you so much, we're going to put you in a flood zone near the cemetery. You can come out and look at the gravestones every morning. You can come out and you can, if it's been raining, you can walk through the flooded puddles because I highly, if it follows the same procedure at 7:00 AM, they're kicked out. They can't stay inside anymore. But no one can look. Keep your heads down when you approve this, too, because if you approve this, that's what you're doing, you're throwing them into a flood zone, you're telling them that's all you're worth. You're intentionally leading to litter and trash in our waterways, plus whatever other bodily fluids, because if you go over near the shelter on Sprott, you will smell it. But go ahead, put that in our water. You make that decision to put it in a flood zone? Or you make that decision to force the city to have to pay the amount of money it's going to take to redesign the floodplain in that area? It's on you.
Mr. Sean Price. Public hearing is closed. Counsel, can I get a motion to approve or deny PH 25-033? Councilmember Segala.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve PH 25-033.
Councilmember Kendrick.
I second.
All in favor, yes. All opposed, no. Motion carries. Motion did not pass? Can you, okay, there we go. Five to zero. All right, now we will move to discussion items. Madam Secretary.
DS 25-032. Discuss and consider proposed amendments to Colleen Code of Ordinances, Chapter 31, Article 5, Division 4, Signs and Outdoor Displays.
Welcome back, Mrs. Messer.
Thank you. This item is a discussion regarding proposed amendments to Chapter 31 regarding temporary signs. As you'll recall, on May 6th, the council directed staff to bring back proposed amendments to the ordinance regulating banner signs. Temporary on-premise signs are currently regulated in accordance with Code of Ordinances, Section 31, 504, subsection 2. So, again, these are just examples of the types of banner signs that we're discussing. Again, some more examples. As a reminder, we did a survey of other cities to see what cities allow these and which cities do not. Belton does not allow them. They classify these types of signs as fluttering signs, which are prohibited by their code. Copper's Cove allows them for up to 30 days without a permit and up to four signs per property. Georgetown does not allow them. They also classify them as fluttering signs and prohibit them outright. Harker Heights permits them for grand openings only and allows them for up to seven days at a time with a permit in the amount of $45. Round Rock prohibits them and classifies them as sweeper flags. Temple classifies them as a portable sign, which is prohibited. And Waco allows them with a permit for up to 30 days at a time and up to 90 days per year, with not more than six permits issued in a single location per year, and their fee is $66 plus a $15 tech fee. Currently, in our ordinance, a business can have one temporary ground sign per street frontage for five days per permit and up to 120 days per year. So with that said, based on direction from council at the last meeting, staff is proposing to amend the ordinance to allow up to two temporary ground signs per street frontage for up to 90 days per permit and allowing them for up to 365 days a year. So these are the suggested amendments to the code. Again, we're proposing to allow two per property instead of one. And up to 90 days, the permit itself would be for 90 days and you could permit them concurrently year-round, consecutively year-round, excuse me. Also proposing to include language in the code that would state that sign permits for temporary on-premise signs would be affixed to the back of the sign. So we currently have that process in place, we just haven't codified it, where the permitting office prints a sticker and it's supposed to go on the back of your temporary sign. So this would codify that practice. I also wanted to bring up the topic of balloons and other types of devices intended to attract attention that aren't necessarily signs in the conventional sense. We've seen more and more of these types of things popping up that aren't, again, conventionally considered signs, but are intended to attract attention. So proposing to add language regarding balloons and festoons to the list of prohibited sign types. And a festoon is just another word for like a garland or some sort of device that's not a conventional sign. In terms of fees, the temporary on-premise sign fees are currently $75 per occurrence per sign, plus the $10 tech fee. So currently, a business with less than 300 feet of frontage may have one sign at a time for up to 120 days, which equals 24 five-day permits per year at a cost of $75 per permit for a total of $1,810 per year per sign. With the proposed amendments, a business could have up to two banner signs per street frontage year-round, which would equal four 90-day permits per year per sign. So in other words, depending on the number of signs on a property, the cost to have a sign permitted year-round would be $310 for one sign, $610 for two signs, $910 for three signs, and $1,210 for four. So with direction from council, we're essentially proposing to change the fee structure, to change the five-day unit to 90 days for a temporary on-premise sign. With that, we're recommending that the council provide a motion of direction for staff to bring back an ordinance for a public hearing and consideration on your July 15th agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Messer. But my only concern is this, I see the fees, but there's nowhere on there about the upkeep of a sign, the one, sometimes they can be like ripped or anything.
Dilapidated signs are currently regulated in a different section of the code, so that language is already in the code.
All right, so basically, you're saying, could you say it all just plain? For 365 days, they can have their signs out for 90 days or they can come back and redo their permit?
So currently, currently, you can have one of these sale banner types of signs for up to 120 days a year. What we're, what the change, up to 120 days per year and in increments of five days at a time. So what we're proposing to change that to would be increments of 90 days at a time and up to 365 days a year. So you could theoretically permit these things all year round in 90-day increments. And instead of having one per sign, one per property, you could have two.
Okay. All right.
Which would, again, it would, it would, it would make them permitted, but it would address the properties that you often see that have 10 or 12 of these. It would, it would limit it to two, but it would make them allowed 365 days out of the year.
Yes, ma'am, that's that compromise. You did a great job on this, by the way.
Thank you.
Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm trying to understand, you're saying that, other words, they can have signs up all year round, those flag signs?
As, as written, that's what's proposed, yes, sir.
And we're seeing the surrounding cities, municipals don't allow that? I mean, I just imagine businesses, a lot of businesses with flags, I mean, this, I mean, I'm all for having a flag sign, but I just think that's too long. I think that's just for, you've got all these businesses with flags, two flags all year I definitely disagree with that. I think that we ought to try to, I mean, we can just take from our surrounding municipals. I mean, we want our city to look good. We're trying to beautify our city, to have different businesses, cars, pawn shops, smoke shops, trucks, food trucks. You've got everybody participating, we've got a flag city. And I just don't think that we ought to go that route. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solomon. I agree with you only on one, I don't. And that's the food truck. That's their only form of advertisement. I can understand really big on beautification and it will, would look like a flag city, but food trucks, that's just the only way they can advertise. And there may be other ways, I don't know, but thank you for that comment. Councilmember Segala.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think it's a good to turn to fees, but here's my big challenge. I know that we're talking about food trucks here, but let's say one food truck says, okay, I'm going to get the sign for 90 days or whatever they're going to get it for and they pay the fee. And then the other food trucks see that and then they put their signs. And then who's going to regulate? I think our code enforcement is stretched enough, so what we're doing is we're adding more to their plate because now you got to go out there and you got to say, okay, they paid for it, but all these others that follow suit are not. And so I think that, you know, I think as a food truck, and I know where it came from, but I think that we also got to take into, unless we're going to hire more code enforcements, this is going to create a nightmare for them. I mean, yeah, one food truck may pay for it, the others just follow suit. And I say, well, he's got a sign, I get a sign. And who paid for it and who did not? Well, let's call code enforcement, they're out there. So it's going to put that burden on our code enforcement. And I agree with Mr. Solomon. I think that, going back to what we got, I know that we brought this forth, but it's always been a challenge. We've gone through this several times before and as good as we try to make it convenient for our businesses, it's always a challenge because I remember, we went through this with our furniture, before it was our furniture stores, and now we're dealing with it, our food trucks. And even real estate, I know real estate, we've dealt with it with our, with our arrows that we put off premises. And that's been a challenge. You got to get a permit to get an arrow because it's off the property that's for sale. But I think, yeah, I think that needs more looking into and I agree with you, Mr. Solomon, that I don't want to create that burden on our code enforcement.
Thank you, Councilmember Segala. That's a different perspective. If I didn't look at it from someone, we'd have to regulate it and that would be our code enforcement. And as you know, we don't have the revenue, as it is, to be hiring more staff at the time because we want to retain the staff that we do have on payroll. Mayor Protem.
Thanks, Mayor. The, so with this proposed, you know, how some of the car dealerships have a bunch of them, they would only be limited to two based off of this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, it would limit, it would limit any property to two.
And if I'm not mistaken, it was actually the work of the code enforcement that actually got people up at arms that started this.
So in terms of how we got here, you know, the code, the code as it's written has been in place for quite a number of years. It just wasn't being enforced. So we began enforcing it, which is what got us here. But to the point about code enforcement, the burden, if you will, on code enforcement already exists as the code is, exists as the code is written. So if these are to be allowed and permitted, that burden on code enforcement is going to remain regardless. The only, the only thing I can think to do to eliminate or reduce the burden on code enforcement would be to prohibit them outright or allow them outright, either way. Otherwise, somebody's going to have to go and check and make sure that some are permitted and some are not.
Right. And then we back to the joint board, trying to compromise the, because of the, some of the businesses that need this to bring attention would be harmed at that point. Okay, I mean, I'm, I'm, we're not in public, I'm okay with this, at least have a public hearing on it, Madam Mayor. And if it's feasible, a motion of direction to bring this back for public hearing.
We have Councilmember Solomon. So the motion of direction is, can I get this correct? The motion of direction, you want us to know right now, do we, the council want to go forward with this or not? That is basically what she's asking us.
Because this is an amendment to Chapter 31. It's required to go to Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing before coming to council for another public hearing, so we wanted to bring it to the council for discussion before going through that process.
Yes, ma'am. So it's basically, she's asking the staff, the council, do you want to leave it as is or do you want to go with the recommendations from staff? or do you wanna go with the recommendations from staff? Councilmember Solomon.
I know you can't have, so, I know there was already one motion on the floor.
No, that was not, that was not what she was requesting.
I, I made a motion of direction, us, for us to table this and come back.
Point of vote, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
My motion was a motion of direction to bring it back.
No, your motion was to have a, bring it, have a public hearing.
Which is, starts with the P and Z process, public.
Right, but you're not, that's not what she said. She said she brought it to us first, before, the public hearing is gonna happen, it's predicated on, do we wanna go with what the staff is recommending or not? That's why she brought it to us.
In procedure, my motion was to bring it, to proceed with the public hearing process the way it is presented.
You didn't say all that, but we're gonna go with that. So now, his motion has changed, of direction, to having a public hearing on, but basically, he wants to have a public hearing, forget the public hearing, he wants to keep the recommendations that staff have already brought. And once, if you, if you approve this, the public hearing will take place automatically. So do you, he needs a second to that motion of direction before we can move forward. Motion of direction dies. All right, Councilmember Solomon.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we, motion of direction that we would table this, come back with a, a better plan than this. We don't need all year round. We need to maybe just, what, what we already got, we may need to maybe add to it, give it some leniency, but not drastically, not, not like that. And I understand about the food trucks, but they have food trucks all over the, all over Austin, everywhere, and they, they make good.
Councilmember Solomon, what is your motion of direction?
That we would table it and come back with another design or suggestion.
Okay. So his motion of direction is to table it and come back with a better solution than what we have?
Yes.
Is there a second to the motion of direction? Is there a second to the motion of, oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Cobb?
Nina.
Is that a second to, is it's only a second before you can go to, if not, I can move to the next person, which is Councilmember Sagara? You cannot discuss it yet. Councilmember Solomon, I mean Sagara. Okay, is there a sec, okay, the motion dies. Now, Councilmember Sagara, your motion die, our direction die.
No, right now, I was just gonna leave it the way it is, so we don't really have to do anything, because I don't want you guys going through all that right now, you guys coming back, you know, even when the motion was made that we table to come back, we're not giving you clear direction on that. And so we don't wanna keep this back and forth, and so I would say, for right now, just leave it like it is, and maybe sometime in the future, we'll, we'll get back to it.
Leave the existing ordinance as it's currently written.
Oh, the city current, not, not the changes now? You wanna leave the city ordinance like it, the original city ordinance?
Yeah, the way it is.
Okay, with no changes?
No changes.
Okay.
And you did, you brought something forth, it made us think, and you know, all the different things, but I think the biggest thing is, no matter what, it, it puts that burden on our staff. It's already putting a burden on your staff and everything, and it's like, why extend that and put it in code enforcement? So I think, let's tackle other issues right now and leave that as it is.
All right, thank you. So the motion of direction is to not use anything, leave the, it like the original ordinance is. Councilmember Cobb?
I second that.
Okay, all in favor, yes, all opposed, no. Motion of direction passes four to one. That was a good discussion. Very good. All right, thank you, council, for that participation. Okay, where are we at now? Sorry about that, council. Now, Madam Secretary.
DS twenty-five zero-three-three, discuss and review governing standards and expectations.
All right, thank you. Madam City Attorney.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council.
Good evening, ma'am.
This is your governing standing, standards item. So just a little bit of background, the governing standards and expectations were originally adopted by resolution in June twenty-eighteen, and they've been revised annually since then. The intent is that the governing standards serve as a single source reference containing the council's rules, protocols, procedures, policies, and expectations for itself, committee members, staff, and the public. Section seven-twenty of the document provides that the new city council shall begin review of the governing standards after, after the election and work to re-adopt an updated version by the end of July each year. So this is the discussion item, and we can go through a couple of things that have come up in, in the year, with the idea that it would be brought back as a resolution for you to, for you to adopt any changes. So first, starting out, section one-eighty A and C requires that staff make a presentation, make, make a recommendation to council on each agenda item. And so in bringing this up and just asking, does council want to continue, there's been some discussion with regard to P and Z items. Does council want to continue to require staff to make a recommendation on P and Z zoning cases?
For me, it's a yes.
Okay. So if the, if, just bringing it up for discussion, so if there's, if there's no direction to change that, then we'll just leave, leave that as is? Okay?
Well, okay, with that being said, with that, like, we have to go through the supermajority, well, we'll get to that. Go ahead, yes, ma'am, it's a yes for me.
Okay. Right. Section two dash twenty is your city council travel policy. And so my recommendation here is that the two thousand, there's a two thousand and seven resolution that goes into more detail about the travel policy, and it, it, these three budget, these three items here, budgeted funds are divided equally among council members, except the mayor receives the one point seven-five times the amount allocated to each. Council members may not donate unused funds to another member without council approval, and newly elected or appointed council members are to be allocated training funds. My recommendation is to go ahead and reference that, incorporate it in the travel policy so we all have it in one place, because we, finance looks at this, this two thousand and seven resolution, but just to have it in one place would be my recommendation. And then also, to reference the current travel policy in, that's in the financial management policies. So we have, again, those, those things apply to council anyway, in, in the management policy, it refers to, that it does apply, that it does apply to council, but just to put it in your document here so that it's in one place, you've got those references, that would be my recommendation.
Yes, ma'am, I just have a quick question.
Yes.
The one point seven-five times the amount allocated to each, or the mayor, except that the mayor receive, why is that there?
That is what was adopted in, in two thousand and seven. That's, I don't know the reason why that was adopted in two thousand and seven, but that's what we've been following.
Could it be because of the travel, more travel? I mean, I go to a lot of places, you have to show up a lot of times. I'm just curious, because that's, that's, I just hadn't seen that. But I do agree that the city council should follow the same standards as city staff. We should all be one accord, make it easy for finance. It's just the words. Okay, next.
So you would, council would like me to include this in the change to governing standards, I'm seeing, I'm seeing heads nod, so I'll include that in the resolution coming back. And then section two dash seventy is the annual special workshop. I've included this here to make sure that council wants to continue to have the annual special workshop, there's been some discussion on that.
The one we have in October, November timeframe?
Yes.
No, ma'am, not for me, and I'll tell you why. Because when we have those, staff doing all the presentations, staff also have a problem with staff councils sending in their PowerPoint slides on time, having it correctly formatted, they have to do everything for us. So if it's something that this council made the decision to do, we not pulling our fair. I just think, no, that's a no for me. And what she's talking about is that the council had made a motion that, on that one time, we all come here in the front and we have our own PowerPoint, but because slides are not turned in, because council do have a option if they wanna turn in slides or not, in order to fill that time, we have to use staff to come up here and present, but it's not for the staff to do it. The council asks for that. So I recommend we need to get rid of it. And each council member needs to hold their own workshops. We have tried this two or three times, and I know for a fact, two people turning PowerPoints, if that, or council don't show up for it. So it's a waste of the resident time, definitely a waste of staff time. So, no, ma'am. Councilmember Sagara.
Mayor, I agree with you. I come to those things and I do not turn my PowerPoint. I come in, I say, I wanna listen to what, what everybody has to say, and as you said, it's staff doing the presentation, and really, you know, not too much is said. I, I, you know, I've always worked with, when people call me and I go out there, you know, like, the young lady there spoke about her, her land, I, they call me, I go out there and I see them, and that's where, where it really makes a difference to me. But we have enough public hearings and stuff where we hear, hear, and I think that, I agree with you, Mayor, I think that, I, I think that we should eliminate that.
Thank you, Councilmember, Mayor Proton.
Mayor, I'm, because I'm, I'm fifty-fifty on submitting slides and being present, two and two, so I'm fifty.
That's true. Sometimes you show up, sometimes you don't.
And so, I, and I agree that each council member should, I don't, and I know the charter does not give us the authority to direct council, like, unless the governing standard says it, can't, about requiring the council members to do a workshop, but I don't know if that's the slope we wanna go down either. I'm just trying to figure out a way, can, or can we turn this into a planning workshop? Would it still be a special, because I know I spoke, I think, to the city manager about doing a special, a planning retreat or something, even if it's just to stay here.
Yes, sir, I do understand you, but the bottom line, staff still gotta do the work. You see, that's the thing about the purpose of having this, it was that we, the council, will present our own slides on all the great and wonderful things we're doing in a community. So if it's for us, we do our own work. I don't think it's fair to staff to be planning, doing everything, it's not like we're gonna plan it. So I just think every, each individual got elected by their constituents, they gave their campaign speech on what they're gonna do, and I think it's your responsibility, when I was on city count, when I was a council member, I had poems, I went out to public events, that's our responsibility. We have to keep staff out of this, it's not their responsibility. Councilmembers Cobb?
I agree, however, if we are having event in our, in our district, can we invite, like, if we're talking about floodplains, can we invite that particular staff member to come out?
Oh, yes, ma'am, it's not about the individual ones, because you do host, I can give you that, we talking about that one time a year that we come and present to the residents. And I was just making my strong statement that council asks for it, but staff have to do it, and it's not fair.
But if we have something similar, then we can.
Your own individual, oh, you can do that.
Okay. I just wanna make sure I'm stealing.
We shouldn't have to put in black and white for a council member to hold a workshop.
Okay.
We should not have to put in black and white for a council member to hold a town hall meeting. Councilmember Solomon.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I, I think that we ought to hold our own, we are council members, we are accountable to the people, and we can have our own workshops, town hall meetings, and it works, getting out there and talking to them, and also just being available to the citizens. And like Councilmember Sagara said, that he goes out, that's what I like to do, I like to go out when someone called me, I like to go out and find out and, and explain. If I don't know the answer, I, I rely on staff, and so it, it gets done, so I certainly agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Solomon, you do hold a lot of events and attend a lot of events in the community, thank you. So it is, council would like for us to take it out. Thank you.
And then the next thing I have, the next thing I have on here is section three dash ten, boards and commissions, the appointment process. It's been, it's been suggested that the council may want to do interviews for certain, for certain boards and commissions, so I wanted to bring this up as an opportunity for you to discuss whether you would like to do that.
Thank you, this was one of the discussions that Councilmember Solomon had brought up in reference to putting, planning and zoning, different committees, the arts committee, different committees, that interview process, we should interview the people that sits on certain committees. So Councilmember Solomon, this is something that you had brought to Mr. Kager.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, yes, I was really concerned, I think that we ought to, as we expect the board members, commissioners, to fulfill their, their duties, we should interview them. We should find out what, what, you know, how they, we should talk to them, and I think that we should find some type of system or some type of way to, to interview them, similar of what we do with a senior advisory board. We call them and talk to them and find out a little bit about them, and I think that would be good, I think it's healthy that we would interact with the selected person, appointed person.
Okay, Councilmember Proton.
Thanks, Madam Mayor, I think some of us do it unofficially, this would just definitely codify it. The only interview process, you just said, senior advisory board does, I know the youth advisory commission, we do for them, their interviews, so, but it has, I think, including that to codify it to make it, because I think it's been just by general practice previously. So I agree with adding this line in there.
Thank you, and if the, we do go forward with this, I would hope that in this interview process, that our twenty forty comprehensive plan, everyone needs to know that, that's very important, just not an interview, make them aware of our vision and which direction that the people, the input from our residents on how they wanna see our city grow. And to say this, if the interview process happened, council members on those committees must show up and be here for the interviews and not put it on staff. So the majority would like that.
Mayor, I got a quick question.
Councilmember Sol, oh, we have a question, and I'll come back to you.
If we, I agree a hundred percent with what you just said, if, since those, each of the subcommittees, I guess, we just, I guess.
Right, each one of us have a committee, but the one with planning and zoning, we all have to come together, because the biggest thing with planning and zoning is this, we already have ordinances in place. We already have a comprehensive plan, a twenty forty comprehensive plan in place. Why are we having a supermajority vote on something that's in black and white in our ordinances, and you're not following it?
Right.
That's my concern.
I was wondering, in that case, if each time there's a P and Z nomination, that the mayor's allowed to appoint a three-person committee to do the interview, that's rotating.
No, I believe that when it, we're gonna follow city policy, when a person is appointed, we all have a say in it, and I think everybody, if you can, if you got three or four people there, fine, but I think all council members should have a say on who sits on P and Z. It's just like interviewing for a seat that comes available. We just don't get three, a committee, but we understand, planning, planning and zoning is significant.
Right, I, I say that, that's, that committee doesn't make the decision, it makes the recommendation. The council still votes on whether to accept that, so you can't have a, a whole council do the interview, because then that becomes a public meeting.
Well, we do that, it's not the first time we have done that.
We've never done, we've done an interview of P and Z members.
We, what I'm trying to say to make it simple, when we do interviews for our city manager, our judge, and our auditor, we all are in the room.
Right.
When we replace, if someone stepped down, there's a vacancy, we're all in the room, because those are significant seats and positions. because those are significant seats and positions. Planning and zoning is very significant, and I think, my personal opinion, three council members are no different than the whole council. How are you going to make that choice? I would never want to do that. I would never want to tell a council they cannot sit into a meeting and give an opinion on one of the most important boards of this city. I disagree with that. Now, other council members can give their input.
I, I guess what I'm saying is, since, I mean, we already do that type of work anyway with two of the boards, and I'm just why I'm saying rotating, so every council member will have an opportunity whenever there's a vacancy, and that committee would recommend to the full council, and the full council will still deliberate as usual on a selection. So I don't think it takes away anything or makes it unfair, but I understand what you're saying, too. I just thought that would be something we consider.
Yes, sir, and if it was, if it was that way, and this, it was written that only three people could sit on the planning and zoning committee, and that would be the committee chairs from this council, I agree, but it's not presented to us that way. We all have to give an opinion on public, planning and zoning. Councilmember Solomon. And I don't want to be in a position, then the person after me want, may want to, I don't want to be in the position to say who can and cannot sit on that committee. I don't want to come out like, I know Sue's and I know Barbara, they put in their application, and it so happened only three people make that choice. I think it should be fair. That's just me.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think that if you go with three, all the council is included, but like Councilmember Adams mentioned about rotating, but everybody's, whoever wants to be able to, we only can have three there anyway.
Nope.
You can have, you can have four.
If we put it, if we, if we put it out, then we'll have four or five people, and any event we go to, we have to put that out. So six people can, or seven people, include me, I can go too. We can just put it out to the public that we doing interviews, and all of us would be in there. And you don't have to show, see, that's the unique thing about this, I see where you're going. If everybody cannot show up, that's fine, but we at least have, we have to have three to show up. I can go with that.
Then that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
You know, everybody don't have, we have three to show up. And then we can, if we, like, if we need to rotate or whatever, it don't have to be the same people, but we know that the whole council can be there.
Okay, yes ma'am. Yes, sir, I see what you're saying. So what he is saying, that it's open up to all council, council members, but you at least have to have three to show up for the interview for planning and zoning.
All right, so I, just a couple clarify, well, a couple comments and then some questions. So if we're going to have a quorum of council, we will notify, that will be a public meeting that will put seventy-two hour notice out, put it out, too, and we'll have a, we'll have an agenda. And then, you know, normally in, when you're appointing council members, you've gone into closed session, but that's, we talking about doing these interviews in open session, is that?
That's, no ma'am, that's why I didn't want to appoint anybody, because that's just, it's just like an interview process, and do, we will go behind closed doors to have the interview.
Okay, I'll review whether that's available, I mean, personnel, under personnel exception for boards and commission interviews.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
But a question on this, so when we're talking about P and Z, are you talking about all board, are we just talking about P and Z, or are you talking about all boards?
Well, all boards, yes ma'am, I see what you're saying. So do y'all just want to do planning and zoning interviews? Councilmember Solomon, you brought this up, or do y'all want to do all boards?
I would, I would suggest planning and zoning and the other boards, we have like, I.
Oh, I see what you're saying, representative already on there.
Yeah, like, Councilwoman Cobb and I are on it, and we normally interview, you know, like that, but planning and zoning could be different.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Sagara.
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to ask, I mean, is it possible that each individual council member can interview? If you, if you have somebody that you like and say, "Hey, can I meet with you?" And that way you make that recommendation, you know, versus, you know, all of us forcing it, it's like, you know, if you got the applications, you can always say, "Meet me here at city hall, I'd like to interview." So I think that, that would be something that, I think the much easier way to do it.
So Councilmember Sagara is basically saying that you interview whoever you may want, and you still come to the council meeting, and you'll have four or five names you got to vote for. That's what he's basically saying. Don't do the interview, interviews collectively. If you have someone you want to be on the council, then you have to interview that one person one-on-one. And he has the right to interview whoever he wants one-on-one. And if we have five people that each person interviewed, they would bring the application here, because, you know, see, and then we, it's the same process, so we might as well not even interview. I mean, it's the same process that we do anyway. So basically, we keep, we do, this is crazy. Yes, sir, Councilmember Solomon. I mean, let me call on Councilmember Kendrick, he has not spoken at all. Yes, sir.
Get this thing to work. My question is, will we have a standard? We all saying we're going to interview, would there be a standard of questioning that you would ask people that are applying for each one of these positions? Because without a standard, I could come back and say, "This person is excellent," and just using Councilwoman Cobb, she could say, "No, they was trash."
All right, so what you're basically saying is that you on the sheet with questions that each council member that may have a person that they would like to be on planning and zoning, to answer those questions, do they fill it out and return it back to us? That's just a long process, when y'all could just do the interviews, it's just so simple. But that's good, okay, that's a good rec, I do agree with that, if you do it individual. Councilmember Kendricks, that's a good recommendation.
Pretty much just an assessment, you want to assess each one of the candidates. I mean, I can, I can say this person is good, and this other person may be good, but how would I distinguish between them if it comes down to that, where they both are good? We got to have some type of standard that says, "Okay, this is the person because of this." Not just, "I remember something happening before I was on this council, where the other person wasn't here, so you're here, you tag you're it." We can't do that, I don't think that's right.
Yes, sir, and what happens is, most of the times on P and Z, the person that is selected is the one that is the most popular. And what Councilmember Solomon was talking about is more deeper, he was talking about qualifications. That's why he wanted to do the interview process, all collectively, and we all be on one accord, instead of having six people names, and we got to go through each one. So that's the way he wanted to do it. Going back to Councilmember, are you finished, Councilmember Kendrick? Councilmember Solomon?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor.
So we all saying different stuff, so somebody, can we agree on something?
Well, I think that we, I like what Councilmember Sagara mentioned of individuals, that's fine with me, we just need a process, we just don't need to select from a paper. We need to have, have eyes on these individuals and make sure that they want to engage, that they really want to do this, because P and Z is important. And so I'm all for that process that we would just, we can interview individually and then bring it back up to the council and let the council decide.
Yes, sir, and in all fairness, Councilmember Kendrick, he did say that we should come up with a form or a sheet with criteria, that we should be asking questions on the person, that's something that we can come up with. What are you looking for, someone that will serve on planning and zoning? He did say that, but he just didn't go and did it.
I agree with that, but I think, I don't think it needs to be long, intense, I just think that we need to have some questions that, some guidelines, and that maybe perhaps staff could come up with.
Okay, thank you. All right, so do anybody have anything different with that, so we won't have to continue to move forward? Councilmember Proton.
I, only thing I want to add is, I guess we need to make sure with the timeline is good, because when we receive, and city secretary does, when she notifies us of vacancies and interview, I just got, I just want to, I guess, Mr. Kegel, or Ms. Clements, we have a set time we have to interview by, that still follows, and then we designate inside granted, because that the person has been interviewed. And I guess we include that in the process, that way we still meet what Councilmember Solomon was talking about, and still do what Councilmember Sagara had mentioned, too, we still continue like we were doing in practice by interviewing, but we actually state the person was interviewed.
And it goes back to Councilmember Kendrick, too. So the only way this could work, from what I'm hearing from everybody, so when we do the planning and zoning application, on the backside of it, it should have those questions, or on the website, planning and zoning, these are the questions that they know they have to fill out the questionnaire. And then, here go the thing, if you don't know anyone on there, and they're filling out the application, who going to go interview them? You got people, you have people filling out applications, questions, and then they just there. But if you don't know these individuals, which council members are going to go and do the interviews? It's not staff responsibility. All right, y'all chew on that. Councilwoman Cobb.
I disagree with all of you all. And the reason why I disagree is because, first of, I'm sorry, that's just taking too much time to pick people, because once you have an application, you put on, come on, secretary, you know, you put those names on there, they tell you how they're qualified, you look at it, ten minutes before this city council meeting, it's not like it's going to be every city council meeting, on the times that we have, we come in, we get together and say yea or nay, come out and have a meeting, and put them on board. Now that's where I'm going. All this other run here and there, and write and call, and, no, I'm sorry.
So I, I agree with you on that part. It's only once a year that we do this. And coming thirty minutes early prior to a council member, a meeting, and just, just having those interviews collectively together, we're going to be here, if you can show up, fine, if you can't, you can't, we're going to be here anyway. So that's a good recommendation. Okay, the last one, please agree on something. Councilmember Sagara.
No, I like it. The reason I was saying individual is because that's the option, you don't have to do it. If you want to do it, you would do it. I mean, and I agree, I mean, these are citizens, they just want to volunteer, it's not a job application, we're not looking for a qualification schooling and all that. The question is, Matt, can you do it? Can you be there on a certain day? And that's it, because the challenge is not, you know, how smart you are, it's like, what's your time look like? And a lot of times, people don't understand that. So it's just, can you commit for a year to be there so many times? And that's about it. I mean, we want all our volunteers to get that experience, not hire professional, you know, planners or zoners or whoever it is, so.
Thank you.
But I think the process that we have, go, I'm with Mrs. Cobb, I like it, just leave it like it is, and let's move on.
Council, Miss, Madam City Attorney, do you, you heard all of the desires, I should say, which council members would like? Do you have a, yes, the discussion on it, do you have a recommendation, how all of this could come together, either leave it as is, or Councilmember Solomon's first intent on interviews?
So I heard a lot of different things, but as, as I was hearing, trying to find where the consensus was, I think that it landed on, we want to have the ability to do individual and perhaps collective interviews, but there wasn't, there wasn't a consensus for requirement to do collective interviews, I didn't hear that. But I can, I can add, I mean, if this is, if this is the council's wish, I can add to the, to the governing standards that council may determine whether they want to conduct individual or collective interviews.
Yes, ma'am, that'll work. Okay, that'll work, thank you. All right, next item.
All right, that's, that's what I have, just to bring up to you, but if there are any additional changes that.
Yes, ma'am. I want to add, not take away. And it was a good point that, that was said, stated tonight, and you tell me if we can, can we put that for citizen comments, you must be signed up prior to the meeting starting?
It does say that already in citizen comments, and I can, if you give me a second, I can get there.
It's in there.
Yes, in section.
Bless you. I wish I would, I highlighted it at home, bless.
In section one dash fifty A nine, citizen comments on agenda items, each person shall sign up in advance, that is in the.
Prior to the meeting?
It says in advance.
Okay.
So we can, we can clarify that?
Yes, ma'am, that's what I want, prior to the meeting. Because I know it's in there, I just want it to be clear, prior to the meeting. Yes, ma'am, that's all I wanted. Okay, next person, Councilmember, Mayor Proton.
I had comments from several folks not here in the last couple, in last.
Wait a minute, I apologize, council, y'all okay with me making that change?
I want to add, if I, I'm okay with making a change, but can we allow a possible, I don't know if it's feasible, to allow online registration, or prior to, if people can't get here by three?
The form is online.
Okay.
And they are able to email that in to the city secretary.
Got you, that's what I'm saying.
Already.
Thank you.
And she did make that statement before.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm all for it.
All right, that, Councilmember Solomon.
I want to just, us to look at public hearing, not public comments.
Citizen comments.
I mean, citizen comments, not, not citizen comments, citizen comments is fine. I'm talking about public hearing. Now, from what I understand, we were, we were, I think, prior to 2022, it's always been three minutes. And so I'm saying, I'm not talking about public comments, please, I'm not discussing public, that's off the table, I'm talking about public hearings, when we have, we had three minutes with the option of another minute. And so I just want to put that out there to see what the council think about that, returning to back to what we had. And it's nothing different than what other council are doing. I mean, it can go either way, four minutes, but I'm just saying, I'm, again, I'm not talking about public, citizen comments, citizen comments can stay, I'm just talking about public hearings.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. So let's get some clarification, is that we're not talking about the citizen comments, it comes after our workshop section, you're talking about public hearing when we go through more detail, and you said instead of five, four minutes, you want three minutes with the option of the council giving an extra minute.
Yeah, and I'm just, I just want to see what the council think about that, and yeah, I would.
We have one more comment, yes, sir. Councilmember Sagara.
I was just going to second that, I don't know.
Okay, all right, so we're going with, everybody okay with that? All right, so three minutes with the option of one minute.
For public hearing.
For public hearing.
Not citizen comments.
Yes, sir.
Citizen comments is remain four minutes.
Yes, sir, she, she got it. Anybody else? Anyone else? Okay, Madam Secretary.
I, I do think we, I'm, I'm okay with keeping it at four, but I know that I'm not going to win that.
Sir, we, they already consented.
Yeah, I was just letting it know that I was, I didn't.
You wanted to be on the record, that you wanted four, but it's not really taking away from anything, it's three minutes with the option of one, you still going to have four minutes.
Right, right, okay.
Council, Madam Secretary, that's all.
So I will, as directed tonight, I will bring this back as a resolution item, with it actually inlined in the, in the document, so you'll vote on it.
Yes, ma'am, I have one more question in reference to that. If the council members that are not here, they can also give their recommendation when you bring it back?
Certainly, certainly.
New recommendations, okay, all right, I just wanted to make sure. Yes, ma'am.
If, if the, if the recommendations are extremely simple and can be, and aren't complex, then they can be made in the same meeting. If it's something that needs more discussion, that I would need to go back and draft some language, then we can, we could bring that back in a, in another meeting again. But yeah, if there's something else that needs to be changed in the meeting, it would need to be very, very clear.
Yes, ma'am, I want, before we. Yes, ma'am, I want, before we close that out, another thing I want to talk about is, uh, we go backwards and forward about disruptions. And we give one warning, two warnings, is that also, I want you to go over that real quick. I want to clarify for the, the person that will take my place, or Mayor Protem in the near future. On basically, because this, we need to make sure we are all on one accord with that.
Section 180, uh, decorum, under the removal process, so disturbances, disturbances, um, that cause a disruption, the, um, the chair of the meeting shall exercise control over persons who disrupt the meeting in the following order of action. Uh, one, call the person to order advising the person of the infraction. Two, advise the person that the infraction must cease immediately, or the person will be ordered to leave. And, and three, then order the person to leave.
Okay, so you get one warning.
You call the person to order. Advise them that they must cease immediately, and then if they don't, you can order them to leave the meeting.
Is, I'm trying to get some clear, is that one warning, you get one warning or two? Oh, you just talking that say, okay, hey, you need to stop, and if you don't stop, I'm going to ask you to leave.
Right. It doesn't prohibit additional warnings, um, but there's all, there's a process of you telling the person you're out of order, come into order, cease what you're doing, or you can be removed. And then if that's continued, then you can order the removal.
All right, when a person is removed, do I have the authority to say you must leave the premises?
So the, the, I believe you do, the governing standards.
I want that in there.
The gov, okay, so the governing standards say the person, um, right now, say that the person is set to leave the meeting. Um, but you do, the, as the mayor has the ability.
Are y'all okay with me putting that in there?
To leave the premises.
Thank you, I want to add that. I want to make sure that we have everything in black and white that happens on this diet, so there will be no misunderstanding. Thank you. All right, Madam Secretary. Oh, Councilwoman Cobb, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say that I did agree with that, but let me tell you why that's so important. I have to say it, I'm sorry, Nick.
Am I wrong to say, we already, wait a minute, ma'am, we already agreed to it, do we not move on? It's going by the government standards and expectation, I'm not cutting you off.
Okay.
Once we agree to it, do, can, do we not move on? Or can we still have further discussion after we got the consent from the council saying yes? Can we continue to talk on this subject?
This is a discussion item, and so it's not a resolution where there's an up and down vote.
No, I agree with you. I just wanted to just simply state that normally, when people are in disagreement, and they're heated for something, and they've been removed, then confrontations afterwards occur. That's an excellent idea to leave the premises.
Yes, ma'am, I just want to make sure we in guidelines with, once we agree on something, can we continue? Thank you. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember requests for future agenda items. RQ 25006, resolution for the City of Colleen to join the American Flood Coalition.
Councilmember.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, um, so, I, doing this request for the City of Colleen to consider joining the, uh, American Flood Coalition, it's a no-cost opportunity that will give us access to national resources, best practices and policy for to strengthen our flood resiliency and infrastructure planning. Um, they regularly participate with Texas Municipal League, and again, it's no cost, no membership fees. It's, it's just a resolution from the council saying that the city is a part, a signature of it.
Right, but floods, uh, we just do, just joining stuff, that's a, uh, we don't have that many floods here. So council, do we want to continue to move forward with this? All in favor, yes, all opposed, no? Do we want to move forward with even putting this on the agenda to discuss?
Yeah, I got to do a motion.
Madam Mayor, is there a motion on the floor?
Madam, may I move to bring this?
I'm sorry, Madam, uh, did it somebody call my name?
I did, Mayor, for a motion, a formal motion.
Yeah.
Did I not say a motion? Oh, I did, oh.
I'll, I'll, I move to bring this back the next meeting for approval of a resolution.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Motion dies. All right, we are now getting ready to go into our, um, executive session. Pursuant to Texas Open Meeting Law, Government Code 551.001, the mayor now calls a closed meeting of the city council on the 17th day of June 2025 at 6:01 PM. Under the following authority, section 551.071, consultation with attorney, the city council will consult with legal counsel regarding pending litigations. Agenda item DS-25-034. The council will now go into executive session. Thank you, Mr. Kegel. All right, we have all, one person missing. Oh, Councilman Solomon. All right, we're going to call this meeting back to order at 6:39. All right, can I get a motion to adjourn? Councilmember Adams.
Madam Mayor, I move to adjourn.
I mean, Mayor Protem Adams.
I move to adjourn.
Councilwoman Cobb.
Madam Mayor.
You got to make a motion before a discussion. This is, this, we end in this meeting, getting ready to go into another meeting.
I second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned. All right, council, we have another meeting, we going right into it, the PFC.